Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll, so that we may establish a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby will likely be absent this evening. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier.
My apologies, here.
Mayor Protem Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Present.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. And I want to welcome everyone tonight. Let us begin with the land acknowledgement. I would ask Councilmember Shenier if you would lead us in the land acknowledgement of the Pledge of Allegiance, please, please.
Please, please rise. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. The Nisi Non-people, the Southern Maidu, the original people of this land, the Nisi Non-people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Miwok, Pootwin-Win Toon peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today, together today, in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenier, for leading us in both the land acknowledgement and the Pledge of Allegiance. You might notice that I have a little bit of a different backdrop tonight, proudly exhibiting the backdrop that says to our community that our city, the city of Sacramento, was designated as the state of California's first pro-housing city in the state. And we are awarded that designation last week by the Secretary, as well as the Director of Housing and Community Development in a wonderful ceremony, that, a wonderful ceremony that a number of my colleagues were able to attend. And the state recognized us, not just as, not, not just because, but because, while we have a long way to go, we have put in place a number of, of very important pro-housing policies, like our waiver of fees for affordable projects, our by right allowance for housing in commercial zones, a whole host of other policies. And we took the opportunity then, and I'd like to take it again, to thank not only my colleagues, but especially the city planning and housing staff, who we recognized publicly, for leading, pushing, cajoling, working with us in partnership to make sure that the housing crisis, but also housing opportunities, remain front and center on our agendas. And so who is here from HCD? I see Megan Kirkby. Are you representing the Secretary and the Director tonight?
I am. I'm our, I'm Megan Kirkby, our Deputy Director for Housing Policy, so.
Well, welcome. And well, would you like to make a couple of remarks and go on for three hours, if you'd like, about why Sacramento got this designation?
I will. No, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much for that, Mayor. And I'm also a big thank you out to some team members here who are sharing some, going to share some beautiful pictures, heartwarming pictures from that, that event, that day. I just wanted to say, it's my pleasure to be here virtually at, at City Hall with all of you. I am local, so, here in the city. But this is a big deal. This is, there's no way to be understated about this. Being the first pro-housing city in our state is something that Sacramento earned, and they have been an incredible partner here. The, the, obviously, the, coming from the Newsom administration, we're working tirelessly throughout the state to keep Californians stably housed, especially in the midst of a global pandemic. We're investing significant resources in housing and homelessness. And obviously, just one example of those is Home Key, our nationally recognized hotels to housing initiatives, housing 7,700 affordable housing units for people experiencing homelessness and counting. And a big part of our success is, in every, in every aspect, in Home Key, but in so much of the other work that I do, is our commitment from local government to also be working towards solutions here. We're so grateful for how you work with the state to provide safe, reliable housing. And, and obviously, we're, we're happy to put more tools in the toolbox here. The pro-housing program gives us a chance to put out some additional incentives to those jurisdictions that are doing the work like you've done to get to become pro-housing. And so the, we really want to recognize the work that that takes. We know it's not nothing. We know that you have to build coalitions, that you have to build alliances to get these kinds of programs passed. And sometimes, I've been doing housing work for 15 years. It, it is not always the most popular, popular thing on, on your agendas that you have to deal with. And I know you, you do face an upward battle with some people. But I will say, one of the things that I see as Deputy Director for Policy is that sometimes that change comes, that, that there is no way to achieve that change without just doing it. And I think, you know, one of the, my favorite stories to tell about, about Home Key is we had another jurisdiction, not Sacramento, where there was significant community opposition to one of the, the Home Key developments, and that it really tried to get stopped, but it was able to be moved forward. Eventually, that same community really begun to see, began to see that Home Key initiative as some, as a mark of pride for their community. They ended up baking cookies for the residents of the, of the initiative. And I think, I see that in housing all the time. That sometimes something that people fight eventually becomes something they're proud of. And I think we're all can be proud that the work you guys have done, that the work that you all have done to become pro-housing is going to pay dividends in the future for our entire community. And so I just want to say that, that give you, give you a little more kudos for some of the specific things that you all have been doing. But accelerating housing production, increasing zoning near jobs and transit is going to reduce vehicle, vehicle miles traveled, your, your impact in climate change. You did a lot of work to create more homes in places of high opportunity, which is going to increase inclusion for low-income households. You put in the work, you got the job done. I cannot applaud the city of Sacramento enough, and I'm very happy you get to be the first. It, it worked out, in my opinion, that, that my hometown is number one. But, you know, it's something we all should be proud of. It sends a strong message that Sacramento and its elected leaders are serious about pulling out all the stops to address housing needs at all income levels. This designation puts Sacramento in the driver's seat when it comes to getting, getting those incentives, getting that preferential treatment on some of the most competitive funding programs the state has to offer to actually make this housing happen, because it's the work you all do on the planning side, but we know that that funding is part of the solution, too. So as a pro-housing city, take advantage of these exclusive benefits from moving you to the top of the list when you apply for millions and millions of state dollars.
That's, that's, that's the tagline right there.
Yep.
Thank you. Because in the end, it's, it's our ability to draw down more state resources, which are competitive, to be able to meet our needs. So thank you so much, Megan. We really.
Thank you, thank you.
Your leadership. I see Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to chime in briefly to thank you also. And then also, again, to just lift up our amazing housing team at the city. Some of them were pictured there. There's a lot more who've been involved in this, and it's just an incredible honor to be the first in the city. I've never met a team that was more open to new ideas, that was not just constantly pushing the envelope, asking the questions, looking for that feedback, looking for those new best practices. And so even since we applied for this pro-housing designation, we've started conversations on five more things, I think, since then. So I just want to recognize that Sacramento is continuing to push and just recognize Tom's team, Tom Pace, the Community Development, and the City Manager, and for just assembling a really great team of folks who are doing incredible work. So just want to add my thanks as well, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tom, anybody from the city staff want to take a bow?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I'm Tom Pace, Director of Community Development, and it certainly is an honor for us to receive this designation from the state. It's something that we've worked very hard on. It's actually something that we've been working on probably more than a decade, I would say, at least 13 or 14 years, as we go back to the first time that we updated our general plan after not having done so for two decades, back in 2009. And we really looked at what we wanted to encourage as a city. So often bureaucracies are focused on what we want to stop from happening, but we wanted to look at, what do we want to encourage? We want to encourage smart growth, transit-oriented development, a full range of housing types to meet the needs of our community. And it was important that we develop policies and plans and regulations and processes that support that type of housing throughout our community. And we've been working steadily on that ever since. And so it's, it's very gratifying to receive this recognition. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Megan, thank you again. And thank you again to the Director and the Secretary, and of course, our own Monica Hernandez, who worked so hard to help put this event together. We're grateful to you as well. And, and this is good. And, you know, but we don't rest on laurels here in the city, because we can't. But we want to use this to propel us to the next level here when it comes to housing, because there's so much need, and it's, it's, the need is profound. So thank you. Great way to start the night, okay?
Yes, great way to start the night, and, and thank you all. And yes, again, shout out to the team. My team is working on quite a few housing element reviews and pro-housing applications, and it's not everyone is, is the Sacramento team. You guys should, should feel proud of, of your staff. So thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too, you too. All right, members, thank you. We could just adjourn here, and it would, we leave happy, so. But that wouldn't be right. So let's go to the consent calendar, and let me ask if members have comments and are questions on any items on this consent calendar. Uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, what do you have?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss a part of item one, and then I have a question on item five, and I want to confirm that item 17 is being continued.
Okay, let's, what, what was your request, I'm sorry, again, on item five?
A question, and not to pull for a separate vote, or something.
Okay, just a, a question. Okay, so that's good, thank you. Let's, let's, Madam Clerk, has item 17 been continued?
Yes, Councilmember Valenzuela asked that that item be continued. It's the Budgetary Adjustments and Professional Services Agreement for the Capital Mall Revitalization Project.
Yeah, so when the motion is made on the consent calendar, let's then just include that, please. All right, I see Councilmember Harris. What items do you want to speak about?
Yeah, I wanted to pull the, the council log, item one, and discuss two aspects of it, and probably call for a separate vote on those items.
Okay. Separate vote, okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Laloe?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I have questions on item six, seven, and 13.
Seven and, and 13, okay. But you're not asking that those be voted on separately, you just have questions, correct?
I just have some, yes, just, just.
Okay, okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to track here. Councilmember Shenier.
Yeah, item one.
Item one, okay. Okay, then, here we go. So let's start then with item one, which is the, the log. And let me begin, Councilmember Valenzuela was up first, so I'll ask her to make a comment on item one.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to briefly discuss on here item five, which was my request regarding the no cruising ordinance, just to provide some greater clarity to my colleagues and to give Chief Lester and some of the city team a chance to, to give some of their thoughts. Just to be clear, I mean, my intent with this wasn't to create just a blank check on, on cruising in the city. I recognize that this ordinance came from some concerns around impeding traffic flows, blocking driveways, around noise. And so the goal here is to really work with the Low Rider Commission to develop a new policy that would permit cruising, obviously with some basic parameters around it that I think would meet the needs of, of everybody in the community. But I know there's also been a concern about sideshows. And so I wanted, Chief Lester, if you're on, near your computer camera here, if you wanted to talk briefly about some of your thoughts about sort of how we could distinguish between sideshows and cruising, and just some, some general, any updates you might want to give us on how you're thinking about this?
I can give you some of the, I guess, concerns and challenges we have over these two traffic issues. Is that what you're asking, Councilmember?
Yeah, I think I, I guess when I spoke earlier to, to the City Manager, he suggested you might have some thoughts about how we could distinguish between cruising and sideshows, and what some of those challenges have been, so that we could incorporate that into the discussion about changes to the cruising ordinance.
Sure, yeah, you know, the cruising ordinance has been in place long before I got here, and it was based on those things that you just mentioned, you know, congestion impacts the community, businesses, residents. We really saw an uptick in sideshows during, really during the lockdown. And what we're seeing is trafficking on social media, where an event will be announced, and we see literally hundreds of cars gathering together, and then we see reckless driving and really dangerous acts from those sideshows, as well as speeding. And then these groups tend to sort of travel around our area. You know, they'll start in the county, but come to the city vice versa. And we have had to staff those with overtime officers and then do some extensive follow-up for the enforcement piece. It's very different than cruising. Cruising, really, I think what's most relevant are just some of the challenges that we've had, and they vary from different parts of the city. So if you look at the land park area, there have been concerns, because we've had essentially car shows that come to the park on some regular days, like Mother's Day, Cinco de Mayo, and New Year's Day. On New Year's Day, I had a patrol supervisor say there's about 1,000 cars parked in the neighborhood, and that was concerning to residents. And when we, when we asked more, and when we really vetted out the complaints, it really came down to, they were concerned about some of the illegal acts that they saw, such as illegal drinking and some traffic issues, but more that the park wasn't being used appropriately, and the organizers could not sought a permit. That's a little bit different than what we're seeing in Old SAC. And I know you were involved extensively in the Old SAC challenges over the summer, and helped with the ballards, the pedestrian, and vehicular safety. So Old SAC is a little bit unique, because it's such a tight area, it's so small, and there's only three points that really you can get in and out. And so when you look at the number of cars and the capacity of Old SAC, which had essentially become kind of a destination for car groups to come and circle the blocks, which is probably what you're thinking, when you think traditional cruising, you know, we estimate about 170 vehicles can fit in the traditional loop. You've got 350 parking spaces in the Old SAC area. And so we have the traffic complaints that range from gridlock to the inability to get emergency vehicles into the area, to complaints from the residents, the 74 residents that live in the area, that they can't access their residence or their parking spaces. We also have complaints from the businesses that really relied on some of the delivery of food services during COVID and the pandemic, where their delivery drivers were no longer willing to come into Old SAC to do the congestion. We've had complaints from the businesses and residents as well, just because the level of noise, the exhaust, the fumes, and then the traffic congestion has really impacted their businesses. From a public safety side, it's really concerning if we can't get emergency equipment into that area. And then on, I guess, in addition to the vehicular equipment, Old SAC really is a cool destination, and the numbers work out to about 18,000 pedestrians on Saturdays, and I think about 12 on Sundays. So you have the pedestrian component, and families, and kids as well. So those are some of, really, some of our challenges, and we've managed it through some street closures and trying to add additional staffing, but it is really significant and really impacts the businesses in that area. Is there anything specific I can answer?
Oh, no, that was, that was helpful. I just, I think I wanted to give you a chance to speak briefly, so that some of my colleagues who I think might, might have some concerns about changes to this ordinance, know that those concerns aren't being overlooked, you know, that the low riders really love, love our parks and love our old Sacramento areas as much as we all do. And I think our hope through this process would be clarifying my direction here to make sure it is that staff can meet with the Low Rider Commission. We have a meeting scheduled Thursday, but I think other meetings to identify these issues, and also meet with the business leaders. We've already started talking with the Downtown Partnership, the Old Sacramento Committee, as well as the Broadway Partnership and other stakeholders, so that we can bring forward an ordinance that, that really allows for, for the car clubs to do what culturally they've been doing for, you know, a couple generations, to be able to continue to operate in the city while addressing some of these concerns and making sure that it's managed and for everybody who, who needs to use the streets. I think we're all interested in that. So I just want to refine my guidance in this and give you a chance to have kind of illuminated that, unless you have something to add, City Manager or Chief. I just want to make sure that item is super clear, and that we work with the low riders, that we work with the business districts, we bring back something that isn't a blank check, but is really ensuring that they're still able to do what they'd like to do, but in a manner that doesn't harm the businesses and residents that are living and working in that area.
I think I have one, one clarification question. And so you're looking to not eliminate the, the ordinance, but to revise it, and/or look at how we permit these types of events going forward, or both?
Yeah, I think I'd like to keep all options on the table, but yes, that's essentially what I'm looking at.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does.
I think the idea was to eliminate the blanket prohibition, either to find a way to do it, or to find a way to amend the ordinance, so that it wasn't so restrictive.
Yeah, I think the latter, in terms of looking at ways to permit these events, would probably be a lot cleaner. But we will have staff at the meeting, you're going to host along with Councilmember Jennings, to talk through what those concerns are. Maybe that will help inform which path we go.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I see Councilmember Jennings, who's working with me on this, put his hand up, too. I don't know if he wanted to add.
On this item, Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Just real quickly, I, I mean, I think our meeting on Thursday will open up the avenue for them to become partners with us in what they want to do and what we want them to do, and eliminate the things that we don't want them to do. And one of the things that I know we want them to do is, they should have a permit every time that they, they gather. That should be one of the things they do, but we want to make sure that it's clear what, what are the rules of engagement and what are not the rules of engagement. They are looking forward to meeting with us. They have formed a commission with roles and responsibilities, so that they can police themselves. They have an exhibition right now at the California Museum, Car Museum, that talks about low riders, and, and really gives the rich history of their culture. And so, you know, I, I want to sit down with them, because I don't think, to my knowledge, I've never been at the table with them in order to make sure that they understand how we want to engage and what, what is allowed and what is not allowed. So I think they can become a true partner with the city and bring incredible value. And I'm looking forward to working with Councilmember Valenzuela on this, so that we can bring something back that can make all of us proud.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jennings. We do have other council comments on the log. There hasn't been a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I was next on this side.
Go ahead, yes, Councilmember Harris, go, go.
Yeah, so, Keith Lester, you know, I've been around Sacramento a long time, and I remember the cruises on Franklin and Broadway, and I remember the issues that came up at the time that this ordinance was created, and it certainly helped to solve a lot of those issues. So am I correct in saying that if anybody wanted to do a cruise at this time, they could apply for permit for a special event in a park? Or, you know, if they wanted to cruise on streets, they could seek a permit to do that kind of activity? Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think now that I understand the councilwoman's request a little bit better, that might be the, the appropriate route for this, because we can help manage the event and ensure that's safe.
Well, it seems to me that we don't need to, to mess with the existing ordinance at all, if that is already permissible. And, you know, following up on what Councilmember Jennings said, those elect activities can be allowed. The real issue here is the resources of PD to manage pop-up events on the streets. The reason we created no cruising zones is because a lot of problems ensued. You know, we've got a different sort of scenario going on with sideshows, but those were the similar kinds of issues that came up with the cruises many years ago, decades ago. So, so what it says on the log here, and if we pass this log, it's directing staff to initiate a process to eliminate no cruising zones in the city. And I do not support that. So considering that, you know, from the comments from CM, Valenzuela, and Jennings, that if, if the way we're heading is permitting, that's already allowed. I mean, I think it's great to meet with the commission and talk about expectations, but we don't need to have on the log, in my opinion, an idea that we're seeking to initiate the end of the no cruising zones.
You know, Councilmember, I'm not sure if my direction to staff was super clear, and if you heard that, but I actually amended the direction to really talk about amending the ordinance, looking for options to help with, address the needs of the cruising community. I think we're talking about permitting as a potential solution here, but the Low Rider Commission is not a part of this conversation. So I don't hope that the law doesn't become a place for us to debate the policy merits of any idea. The real idea here is whether or not we want to give staff direction to work with council members and the community on proposed issues and, and potential changes. And so what we will bring back could be, hey, this, we're just going to pursue permitting, and we want to have a discussion about what that looks like. It could be changes to the ordinance, and I'd like to keep both things on the table.
Yeah, it's, it's just, I, I interpret, I mean, the log, this log thing is imperfect, and I understand the reason for it. We're trying to help the city manager and management prioritize numerous council requests. But I view this as, as an ask to please make this a priority in terms of trying to solve some of the underlying issues that have been raised here. It could involve an ordinance, may not involve an ordinance, but we're not actually debating what the prescription here is tonight. We're just telling the city manager and the police chief, you know, this is important, please, please work on it. Councilmember Harris, do you have any other, on any other items, on item one?
You know, I think it's, it's fair for staff to meet with the group and talk about what the options are. But at this point, you know, I mean, if the direction is not to eliminate.
There's no, no, there's no, there's no such direction. It's just, there is no such direction.
Well, that's fine. I also have comments on number six.
Okay.
But Jay, I believe, wanted to speak about that, and since he brought it up first and amended, wrote a letter of amendment, perhaps Councilmember Shenier would like to go before I make my comments.
Did you have any other items you wanted to talk about?
No, just, oh, yes, I do. I want to talk about number eight as well.
No, go, why don't you do number eight, and we'll get back to Councilmember Shenier, and say, by the way, this log thing's really saving us a lot of time. It's, it's good. Here we go.
It wasn't meant to save us time, it was meant to save staff time.
Yeah, I'm teasing, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so, Mayor, at, at the state of downtown, you brought up the idea of basically a citywide EIFD. And maybe you can clarify what the workshop that you're looking at is about. I mean, I agree with the idea, absolutely, that EIFDs are tremendous tools to encourage development in the city. A case in point would be the Growers District on North 16th Street. Problem there being that the infrastructure in the River District is really old and really decrepit, and the cost to the developer is daunting and may prevent, you know, a project like that from going forward. So the idea of, of instituting an EIFD is great, but what is the workshop part of it?
The workshop, well, first of all, the city manager and I have talked, have given to approval, obviously, of the council of the log here, is that he would engage with a consultant, appropriate consultant, who could do some foundational work and actually look at the central city and analyze for us where development on its own likely will not occur in the absence of a significant economic infrastructure incentive. And that, that report then would be the basis of a council workshop, where we could take that information, and depending on the information, we could then direct our team Where we could take that information and depending on the information, we could then direct our team. Uh, to begin actually working on uh, the appropriate ordinances or. Or or resolutions that would allow us to begin being even more aggressive in the central city. And even beyond, I mean, I, that was a state of the downtown speech uh, in the central city to see if we might look at. Where blight exists, where development could cure that blight, where affordable housing. Uh, which we know we have a desperate need for, where it could be built, where adaptive reuse could succeed. Where the local match for some of our climate and transportation investments are needed. Um, you know, I've been doing, for five years, I've said this city needs more tools, economic development tools, financial tools. To be able to invest in 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 inclusive economy. And this is a tool that's worked Craggy Square. It's working, uh, it's going to work for the rail yards, and I'd like to at least explore the idea of using it more broadly. Yes, to pay for infrastructure, affordable housing and clean and green um, infrastructure that helps us. Uh, fund the local match for our our climate and transportation plan.
Yeah, so the consultant would then bring back the idea of how to use the E EIFD tool to achieve those ends, correct?
It's a, it would be a guide. That's right. I mean, the consultant, it would be a starting point so that we start with some analy- analytics. And you know, we can probe and question and 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 then set a direction.
But it will also help to quantify the opportunity as a basis for the conversation in the workshop.
Yeah.
Well, so Mayor, I just wanted to say I support you in this.
Well.
I think it's an important tool to explore. And there are, you know, opportunities like the one that I mentioned that will suffer for lack of help with infrastructure. And that's what the tool is all for, so let's move forward.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. This is uh, this is scary, but yes, thank you. I'm kidding. Very good. Okay, so now let's go back to Councilmember Shinier on uh, the other log item.
Mayor, I think if if Councilmember Harris wants to have a separate vote, I'd rather, can we get through the consent item, consent calendar and then?
Fair enough, okay. Then that, we'll come back to item one. That's fair enough. Okay.
Well, just just number six on item one, I think.
All right, that's that's the only dangling uh, participle left. Okay, so um. Now, now let's go to item five, Councilmember Valenzuela um, on the consulting services LLC.
Yeah, I, yes, um, and sorry, uh, I see Michael Jessel on the screen. Hello, I didn't get a chance to ask you in advance. But um, I was reading this and curious about the scope of work here and just if you have any updates you can provide on what this contract is working on. Um, you know, it seems like maybe we're getting near the end of something, maybe it just is keeping going again. Um, just curious if you have any verbal updates you can share about about this.
Sure, and I'll 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 begin the conversation. I also have Marco Gon- Gonzalez, who's the project manager for rail yards, is engaged with much of the work. With uh, with John Dangburg. Um, so you are correct, many of the things that uh, Mr. Dangburg has been working on on behalf of the city. Are either coming to a close, we're at a stopping point. Um, so so we're hopeful that's the case. Um, uh, this, he's worked on a lot of things from Abbey Square to MLS, to the rail yards in general. There are still some ongoing kind of projects and analysis that he's been very helpful on. And so this would extend that to the point where we believe we'd be at a a better completion point or at least stopping point uh, with respect to that work. And Marco, I don't know if there's anything you would like to add. I think you were on here. There you are.
No, well said. Um, I would just, I would just reiterate that this is kind of a wrap-up of the contract. There are a few iterations of of various projects that are still want to be prepared uh, to, you know, continue with services if needed. But um, this is just uh, to prepare for the worst case or or best case scenario.
Okay, I appreciate that update. Thank you both.
You're welcome.
All right, so that's, that's, that's good. Item six, uh, Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, on number six, I just have a question. Um, as far as this ten million dollars. Um, how is this being distributed and do we have any data to show uh, the performance? Of the previous money that was allocated uh, for um, arts and um, the creative economy fund? So I don't know if anybody's on, on right now that we could have that discussion. Or if the data can be ready for, you know, next week to be available for us.
Sure, uh, so that would, uh, so Megan Men- uh, Voorhees, who is our Creative Economy Manager is on, and she can speak to that directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, Councilmember, we did collect information, direct information on programs and services that were provided. So pro- direct program activity that was funded in terms of a final report. Um, the the items, uh, previously, a lot of the vast majority of the grants that went out to both individual artists. And to arts and cultural organizations that were funded through the CARES grant were largely reimbursement grants for lost revenue. So so the real measure, to be honest, on a lot of that is actual like preservate, organization preservation. And arts and cultural, or an artist being able to continue to operate. In the long run, we do have longitudinal data sets that we have access to. We ask our grantees to be able to provide annual information through a tool called the uh, Data Arts Cultural Data Project. Which provides regular information on their programmatic activity, on their financial health, uh, on their board members, on contributions and all of that information. So we do have some of that information that existed pre- pre-pandemic. Some of it is uh, also on a delay as they're providing some, you know, like as the times progress. So we expect ahead of um, approval of the Cultural Arts Awards Grant Program, which is, which is forthcoming. Many of those organizations have to submit those cultural data project profiles, and we'll have access to that information. Wouldn't necessarily be available next week, but we do have access to it and can provide it and follow up.
That would be great, because I I just want to see uh, when this money gets distributed. Um, where's the core of the money going and which district it is going, just as a data and what entities are um. Getting help from this grant. I think that's, that's very important that we have that list. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a question on this item also.
Go, go. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. So Megan, uh, we've talked a lot about the guaranteed basic income for artists. Uh, and I I'd like to share some of those points with my colleagues here. I am decidedly not in favor of simply giving money to artists and not expecting anything in return. You know, we talked about this at length. We talked about the possible collapse of the ecosystem of artists in our city. Uh, but you know, I stress the point to you that if we are going to support our local artists with a stipend. That is basically welfare unless we expect something in return. And I think it's very reasonable to expect something in return. We're basically creating an opportunity here for artists to pursue their craft in an environment. In which there's not much money to be made, correct? That's the idea?
Are you looking, I I can provide a fuller response to that. I think that um, the the proposal to introduce a guaranteed basic income, a monthly stipend. Is designed directly to respond to a considerable amount of instability in the gig-based environment that many artists are dealing with. So that's, that's actually what's really driving um, the idea of a solidarity payment for them as the sector continues to recover. As we expect that it's likely, McKinsey and Company, for example, set a sector recovery in the arts and entertainment sector up through twenty twenty-five. In a, in a prolonged scenario. So the idea here is actually to provide a a stable base of support for people in a very vulnerable time. As many of the arts and cultural organizations and other organizations that they rely on for those gigs begin to come back and make uh, opportunities available. So that's the intent, to allow them to continue to provide the cultural contributions that they do within the sector.
Well, don't you think it's reasonable to expect them to produce something for the money that we're giving them? To in some way assure us that they are continuing to participate in the uplifting of the city through the arts. Uh, to show what they're doing with the money in terms of their own personal development. I mean, that just makes sense to me, and it does to a lot of my constituents as well. I've received a lot of letters about this.
Yeah, so I will just add that we've discussed as a part of the um, the process of making sure that that folks have a regular reporting in. On the creative activity that they're doing, and many that are pursuing a guaranteed basic income model. Um, particularly like, uh, for example, in um, San Francisco. It's really designed to address the time poverty associated with um, many artists who are working sometimes three, sometimes four jobs. So the reality is that we could, in the current scenario, end up with actually getting more creative production. Um, than we are getting right now, just because they're able to address and have that time to be able to create more work. And contribute in the ways that they have been. So that's the the intent, and we do have um, full um. We're fully intending to be able to research this, understand the impact, understand what they're doing. Um, so that we can report back on investment, uh, the in, the impact of the investment.
Well, I, what, and what kind of timeframe are you going to report back? I mean, how are you going to track this?
So we did um, a survey. We had about four hundred and seventy-five responses to the survey, survey from artists and creative workers in the region. Asking them when it would make sense for them to be able to to report back, just, you know, trying to get a flavor for for what people thought we could ask for. People were very responsive to that. Um, monthly reporting was something that they had proposed, quarterly reporting was something that they proposed. And so while we still have to work on refining the guidelines, I think there are ways for us to monitor this along the way. Along with being able to, uh, and and this is the other thing that I'll add about why we're pursuing this approach, which. You know, investments in artists is outlined in the Creative Edge Plan, and it's both financial investments, but also capacity building. Which is really what we're trying to do here as well, which means we'll also be able to report on the growth in the professional development of the workforce. And a lot of people had interest. That's one of the highest responses we had in terms of the survey was people who were talking about the opportunity to grow their professional practice. Everything from their entrepreneurial skill set to their grant writing skills, to their marketing and communication skills. To on the other side, the potential, like, if you consider it like product lines that artists really have, those folks that are doing social practice work. Those folks that are working in healthcare intersection, those folks that want to do public art, want to expand into teaching artistry and et cetera. So it's really twofold, um, that we get the opportunity to invest and plant the seeds of what could potentially become the future creative economy here. And there are some real significant examples, actually, of some people that have started arts organizations today. That had their roots and seeds as teaching artists years ago.
Well, my only concern is that you don't have clear criteria that you're, that you're exacting from the participants. You say you're going to build it as you go. At what point are you going to tell the council what those criteria are? And what kind of reporting back you're getting?
So I can actually share a little bit more about that, Councilmember, in light of our conversations, if you need.
Come, I'd rather not have a long debate about this tonight. I I, the questions are totally appropriate. Um, but I think what I hear Councilmember Harris asking is, before the money goes out. Will there be some uh, written uh, criteria that you can report back on? That will assure him that there's going to be uh, some accountability, if you will, uh, for the money. I I I think the history of these of programs applied to non-artists has been that they are lifesavers. And they're, they help working people actually uh, be able to continue to work because of the costs of life. Including childcare and a whole host of other necessities. And so um, I I just, rather than debate it tonight, um, if that's okay. Can we assure Councilmember Harris um, about what the process is going to be in terms of the criteria before the the money goes out?
So yes, we do have preliminary framing. All of the guidelines get developed internally. We're, we are engaging in community feedback because we just think that's a good process, you know, from an equity perspective. To make sure that the community has a voice in terms of what we're doing. But that work, the preliminary, the guidelines that we're developing will go to the Arts, Culture and Creative Economy Commission for consideration. Um, and they'll ultimately approve and adopt whatever gets um, decided upon and have an opportunity with that. There would need to be a third-party administrator, and there will be an RFP process to identify that administrator and set those things, set that up. And that would have to come back to council with those guidelines for um, for ultimate adoption within the context of that RFP.
Okay.
Well, that that solves the issue, Mayor.
Okay, thank, thank you, Councilmember. No, they're, it's a good, good, important questions. All all right, so that takes care of six in terms of the questions. Now, item seven, uh, Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Um, again, just a quick question. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So um, this um, additional money that um, we're sending towards um. Steps, first steps, um, is it to cover till June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two? Is that like the budget for that timeline?
There Bridget Dean here as well.
Yeah, Bridget Dean's here, but yeah, in in nutshell, yes and no. It's going to give us the capacity as we grow some of these programs. When sufficient funding becomes available, we we have the ability to move forward on this contract or not. Uh, and that's, that's really the answer. And Bridget, maybe you want to add to that, because we're going to cover some of that in the item later in the agenda.
The council member's question, uh, Councilmember, the the portion of that, about nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand will fund COFAX through June thirtieth.
This is, and then uh, my next follow-up question would be, do we have reserve funding available for past June thirtieth?
Again, that will be covered in the later item. Uh, there are some unknowns about funding coming down that we're anticipating, but has not arrived yet. Uh, and it will be covered thoroughly in the item um, later in the agenda.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Laloe, Councilmember Laloe, you had one more item, that's item thirteen.
Yes, I, item thirteen, um, you know, I had a great meeting with um, the, the, the team from EPS. And now I'm reading this as expanding their, um, their quote-unquote audit or consulting. Uh, I'm just trying to see what, what are we trying to achieve with the expansion of this to June thirtieth of next year?
Hi, good afternoon, or I guess good evening now, Councilmember Laloe. Um, the purpose of the extension of the contract is really to allow um, for the the possibility of additional briefings. By um, EPS team. Right now, I've been charting out the times that we're going to have at the the Law and Legislation Council. And it's anticipated that that will, may well go to early May. Um, if we want additional briefings at council or at the the Design and Planning Commission, those might actually take us past that. June twenty twenty-two um, contract end date. And so it's basically an evidence of an abundance of caution and to give the city additional flexibility. That we're looking to extend that out for a year for additional briefings that the city may request.
And are we using this EPS report as kind of a guideline? On how we're going to be looking at our policies or updating our policies? Or this is just a simple report for our review?
So the E, the purpose of the EPS study, it it does satisfy the council's request for um, a report on various aspects of the cannabis industry in the city of Sacramento. I know in the Office of Cannabis Management, we are looking at it and the data that it has, um, to help guide um, uh, policy as we move forward. Um, and that, of course, policy will, will, if we look at changing anything, we're, we're going up through the Law and Legislation Committee. Um, or the Planning and Design Committee, and then up to the council.
Right, and I appreciate that, but you know, I've been asking for some updates regarding this industry for almost a year now. So when EPS was introduced, um, I was under impression that they're just going to do some internal studies. Like the land use issue that we have, um, especially in certain districts. But from their report, um, that was not covered at all. So, and when I'm reading their report, it seems like it's a, it's pretty much a very pro cannabis industry. Report. So I'm a little bit concerned if we're utilizing this report to set up our new policies. To make sure both the industry is protected and also our communities. So again, this report so far has not shown me anything that can be utilized as a guideline or a vehicle for us. To maneuver down this road and update some of these policies that are just not workable any longer.
Well, again, I I, tonight's not the forum to debate the the merits or the substance necessary of the study. This is a budget request to pay, I guess, uh, the remainder of the study. Uh, so uh, do, would you like to take this vote separately, Councilmember Laloe?
Yes, please.
Okay, so that, that'll, I think, sort of, you're, you know, you're, you're pointing, that's fine and fair. So, so here's what I'm going to uh, ask for, and then we're going to hear public testimony. Well, is here, is there public testimony on the entire consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
I do have one hand raised to make public comment.
Let's hear the one, let's hear the one caller.
Uh, Shira Lane on the consent calendar.
Really?
Shira, if you'll unmute. Shira Lane, if you'll unmute, it's your turn to present to the council. Mayor, it appears they're not unmuting.
Okay, Shira, are you on? No. Okay. I would bet it's, uh, she's calling in favor of, uh, item six. Would be my guess.
And Mayor, Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on item twelve, and I'm not sure that I need to, but in an abundance of caution, I will do that.
Yeah, okay, so here's what I would ask for now that we are done with the public testimony and the council comments. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. With the exception of. Items one, because we're going to come back to that in a moment. Item, item thirteen and item seventeen. And note for the record that Councilmember Shneer will be marked abstention on item twelve.
No, recusal.
Recusal, excuse me, recusal on item twelve.
Mayor, to be, um, to clarify, is the motion to continue item seventeen?
I'm sorry, that, that motion would include continuing items seventeen. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, that's right. Okay.
And Mayor, I, I apologize. I said, you can ask Councilmember Harris, but I think only I, only number six on item one. Was to be for a second, a separate vote, so I think you can dispense with the rest of it.
I guess that's correct. Okay, other than item six. Okay, so let's go.
Okay, so I will move the consent calendar with item one, except for item six, and except for item thirteen. Continuing item seventeen and allowing Councilmember Shneer to recuse on item twelve.
That's right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, you got it.
And and I'll be happy to second that incredible motion.
Okay, Councilmember Jennings, good, let's call the roll on that motion, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby is absent. Councilmember Laloie?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shneer?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, all right, that passes. Thank you very, very much. Okay. Let's now take a motion on item thirteen, so we can dispense with item thirteen as well.
Uh, I'll move it.
Moved by Councilmember Shneer?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Valenzuela, please call the roll.
Count, Vice Mayor Ashby is absent. Councilmember Laloie?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shneer?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
Mayor, um, Vice Mayor is on as Daniel Bowers. There's something going on with her phone, but so she is on here as well.
All right, let's.
She, I think she, I think she wanted to vote on this.
Hi, Vice Mayor.
There she is.
Okay, do you, before I, on item thirteen, the consent calendar, do you want to cast a vote?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we're here, you're fine. We're, it's okay. I know you've been tending to an urgent situation in your district. So. Item, item thirteen. Well, we just did the consent calendar, but I guess I closed the roll. Can we add, uh, Vice Mayor Ashby to the consent calendar, please? Without objection?
Yeah, the consent, I, I'm a yes.
Including item thirteen?
And then thirteen, is thirteen a separate?
It, it's the supplemental agreement on the comprehensive cannabis study. It, it's to pay, pay for the remainder of the study.
Um, okay, I.
That was a separate vote requested by Councilmember Laloie.
Yeah, okay, yes. Thanks, Mayor, thanks for catching me up.
So you're a yes on that as well?
Yes, thanks, Mayor.
You have that objection, let's count, uh, Vice Mayor Ashby's a yes on the two motions, on the two motions that have been. Put forward and voted upon. Okay, we have one more item on the consent calendar, and that is subitem six. Of item one, the log. The. Save time log. Councilmember Shneer?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief and can certainly answer any questions. I, I actually think it's really appropriate that we're doing this item today as we. Just accepted and congratulated ourselves on the Pro Housing Award. This is really about building more affordable housing, but this item is about having that discussion. As I said last week, you know, we have, as we all know, about ten million dollars in our housing trust fund. That doesn't go very far, maybe one item. We need to figure out how to leverage those dollars. There, and and the memo that I put together as a supplemental is really to be very specific. About requesting a workshop and what would go into that. Certainly open to adding items if we need to do that. But I think it's important for us, again, to have a discussion to see if we want to do some bonding, if we can raise. The ninety million or so that would come from a five million dollar a year debt service payment. Looks at kind of how we want to use the ten million that we do have potentially for two years of debt service. And I would just note that we have either one, two, or three major projects. In, in the homeless issue and affordable housing. You know, the hundred acres and and Councilmember Vang's area. The, the potential that we have in Midtown and and the potential desire to do something in. In the north area, but we have no dollars for those things over time. So this could be an answer to that. And again, what I'm asking for is direction. As laid out in this memo, to be able to have a workshop in April or May.
By the way, in my, I'm, I would like to say I'm in favor of this because of course we should look at this. We should hear from our treasurer, we should be exploring all options. And that's all this is, is a request that this be worked upon, not a final decision. This could be combined in some ways with the EIFD discussion as well, since the EIFDs. Can be used as well to, uh, for affordable housing. And so. I, I think it fits in nicely with asking the question, what are we going to do to increase the supply of affordable housing in our city?
And the, the one thing that I would also note is the difference between this and as I was speaking about it last week. Really is, we, we know that we need to include SHRA in this discussion as we go forward, so they would be a vital.
Of course, of course.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Councilman Harris, did you want to speak on this one?
Yes, yeah, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, well.
So, so when Jay brought this up last week, it was really a suggestion that we look at bonding. And as we all know, you know, we had a discussion about this at length, about stress test and ultimately percentage of debt service. So I've asked the treasurer to just simply come and, John, I want to ask you, I mean, is the idea of bonding. Going to pass a stress test? It didn't last time. I don't think it will this time. Jay, honestly, I agree with everything you're bringing forward in your supplemental letter. It's just the bonding piece I think we can put to rest right now.
Well, let me, let me answer it before, and I, I would ask also the city manager at some point. To give us some direction and parameters around this, these types of items. If we, if we're going to go discuss content, that's one thing, and I would be prepared differently if we're going to do that. If this is a. A go-no-go of, of, of asking staff to look at something, that's a different situation. Let me, let me just say, Councilmember Harris, yes, we would, we would fail a stress test. I have no doubt about that, even on a five million dollar a year debt service. But that's not the question. The question is really one about priorities. And where we want to spend our dollars. And if we were to move forward on something like this, we would have to find the five million dollars either. From the mayor's EIFD, from other sources, those are budget decisions we have to make. But I'll concede right now, well, we would fail a stress test. I'm not, but I don't think that's the issue.
I, I think I want to put a firepoint on that, and that is that this is, uh, you know, the, the item before you here, and these items. Are really to help us prioritize as your staff, uh, what we should be working on. And I think that's, that's the appropriate conversation here, and. Whether or not these questions are appropriate or not, I'll leave that to the council because, you know, ultimately, the council has to decide. For the staff to work on this or not, we're going.
That's right.
Mayor, can I?
So, I'm sorry, go, Councilmember Vang, go right ahead.
I just, um, I just wanted to make a comment, you know, in the log, um, last year in June, uh, June eighth, twenty twenty-one, I. Made a request that we schedule a workshop really discussing the framework of our city housing trust fund, because, as you know, the trust fund has become. An item where we're just randomly pulling money from when we need to fund projects or whatnot. And so I actually think this is really good timing, the request from Councilmember Shneer. And would we just, I, I think we can also include my request as part of that too, because. As I'm looking at the log, it's ensuring that SHRA is part of that and that we actually have a workshop. Around our, our housing trust fund and having a framework around this in terms of how to use those dollars. So I think. We could definitely do a workshop on that. And in addition to, um, Councilmember Shneer's requests, I think they're, they're in alignment. So just.
No, I think they're in total alignment and thinking about how we prioritize the dollars that we do have is really important. So I, I. I, I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember.
Well, so I have a final comment here. What Jay is proposing this week is different than what he proposed last week, but I still want an answer from our city treasurer about bonding. Uh, you know, John, just simply say it.
Well, I mean, I mean, Jay alluded to it, we, back in.
I didn't allude to it, I said it, just to be clear.
Yeah, you said it.
We would fail a stress test, I get it.
Yeah, because in two thousand nineteen, two standards were set up. Councilmember Harris, you did the stress test, and Councilman Hanson did the six percent limitation. We, we have no problem with six percent capacity, but. We did a stress test and it was using mid-year information of FY twenty twenty-one. And it's, it's, it's plain and simple that we could not, they're based, the recommendation from the consultant is we should not take on any more debt. Because our, our revenues are only growing two point six percent and our expenses are going three point eight percent.
But that's based on all other things being static.
Right, that's based on no budgetary changes, no, you know, no change in spending behavior from the council. So, yeah.
Yeah, again, we're not debating the merits of this. I think Councilmember Harris should vote no, uh, to have the staff work on this, because he, he. Has an opinion and a conclusion that that he's already reached others and doesn't think it's necessary. That's okay.
Well, actually, that's not exactly right, Mayor. I mean, I do agree with setting priorities on projects. And everything that Jay brought up, I just simply don't think that bonding is the way to get there. I think we should have that discussion. And see how much state money we can pull down and set priorities. But there's no point in going over the same ground that we've gone over before.
Okay, so I think it's been framed, I mean, you know, stress tests, the city finance. The city treasurer has a stress test, but so do the people who are without housing. And the people who could lose their housing unless we create additional supply. So. It, it's a legitimate question and debate to be had here. Let's vote then. On whether or not for the staff.
Mayor, I, I have my hand up, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, go, go.
I, I may not have done it right, and I'm standing on a corner in District Two, so Councilmember Laloie just, you know.
Go, go.
I, uh, first of all, you know, thanks for your patience with me. I'm sorry, it's really loud back here. I'm on Daniel Bowers computer out at a site where we just found an at-risk youth. That was missing for the last forty-eight hours. So right off the bat, thank you to SAC PD and our Office of Emergency Services for helping and the. Homeless Advocates, Crystal, we're all very helpful. Mayor, I wanted to chime in on this item because I wanted to ask, first of all. Uh, our city manager a question, and then I wanted to thank our treasurer, because in the past, we've put him on this hot seat before, and. He's telling us what we've asked him to tell us. We asked him to tell us if things would pass a stress test. He's trying to do that, and I. Appreciate that you're doing that, John. I just want you to know that I hear you. Thank you for doing that and and letting us know what what we can and can't do. Based on that stress test. But Howard, my question for you is, I don't really have a problem with a workshop. But I thought the question before us was, should city staff, meaning Howard's staff, spend time on figuring out how to bond? For the housing trust fund. And my answer to that would be no, why would we spend any city staff time on something that we already know? And everyone on this call concedes on the front end, uh, doesn't pass the stress test. But a housing. As Councilmember Vang has described, a, a workshop to talk about housing and particularly the housing trust fund. And I think the mayor's brought that up many times before too, I would be in favor of. But my, so my ask is, what exactly are we voting on? Because if we're voting on just having a conversation down the road, sure, but my understanding is we're voting on whether or not. City manager Chan and our treasurer Coville and our city attorney should spend staff time looking at the capacity for bonding relative. To housing. And on that, I, we all acknowledge on the front end, it won't pass the stress test. So the answer should be. No, we have precious little staff time, and we shouldn't waste it on something that we, we know isn't going to pass the very most basic test when we get there. So Howard, can you help me with that? Am I, am I misunderstanding? And I'll put myself on mute because it's so loud here. I'm so sorry.
No, no, I mean, it's an appropriate question. I think, I guess that goes back to Councilman Shneer is, as we go forward, can we have the conversation without putting in motion? Those things that that need to happen to prepare us to issue a bond?
Yeah, I, I, I think the treasurer already has that item. I mean, when I called him about this, his response was, I just. Appropriate timing, I just got off the phone with Goldman Sachs. So again, you know, we can talk about the stress test all you want. It's really a matter of priorities. If this council made a decision that it wanted to spend five million dollars a year. On affordable housing to do this, then that's a policy decision. You know, there's two questions here. Will it pass the stress test? No, I get that. Is this something we want to do and figure out a, a way that we want to spend it, which might include making other cuts someplace? That's the decision that the council can make. So I don't, I don't think it's, it's doing this for, for another reason. And I think. I think the treasurer, I mean, and John can ask, can answer how long it would take to do this. All we're saying is. Do we want to move forward with something like this and provide direction to, to them? But these are the questions that I think the treasurer would come back to us.
So the mech, the mechanics of this are largely done, because this has been an exercise we've gone through before. So in some ways, we're arguing in circles, because what Councilmember Shneer has the right to do. For example, as part of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, is to put forward a motion that says, let's set aside five million dollars a year and bond against for housing. So whether staff works on it or not, I think the workshop, just to cut through this, I think the workshop. Can be inclusive of all of the potential financing tools to do more affordable housing, including a bond. And the council can look at it, the city treasurer can weigh in, the public can weigh in. The stress test answer might be different in May than it is in, uh, uh. That than it is in, uh, at the beginning of March. I don't know.
Or it may be different in two years.
Yeah, so that, but the question can be, the, the question can easily be brought before the city council. This is the problem friendly with this law business. Is that it, it, it has actually. Mushed together the, the policy debate versus what quote staff should work on. I don't know, the staff has to do a lot more work on this. This has been done. And it's just a policy question for the council. So at the appropriate time, when we have a workshop. You know, in the next month or two, we can ask and answer the question. And to the degree that, you know, Mr. Colville maybe needs to just, you know, send out what has already been worked on. When I raised this a couple of years ago, it was part of Measure U, Steve Hansen raised this. We were ready to go right before COVID, as you remember, and then it, it got. Way late for obvious reasons. It's not, staff doesn't have to do a lot of work here. Except prepare for a workshop and make this one, one option among several options.
But, Mr. Mayor, let me make one point, though, that one thing that the fieldmen folks did say, that if we issue additional debt, it could affect our debt rating. Which will affect anything we do down the road. So I mean, that's once. One kind of stipulation that's not being talked about that we need to, I, I need to take into account when we do this analysis, but I understand, I understand your point. I'm just saying.
But I think, John, if I could say, I mean, that's, that's the beauty of being able to have the policy discussion.
Right.
And take all of those things into consideration.
Right.
At this point, we don't have that information. It's good to hear. That could color what we do, obviously.
Okay, so I, I get that.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I just, I needed to hear Howard answer the question. I know you said it's not a lot of staff work, but. The question is to how, I mean, what is the question in front of us? Because if the question in front of us is, can we have a workshop? I'm, I'm good on that. If the question in front of us, which I believe it is, is does Howard go work on the bonding issue, I'm going to vote no. So I want to. So I want to hear from you, Howard or Susanna, what is, what is the question in front of us right now?
Well, for, for my shop, there's, uh, I think that the mayor hit on it, there's not a lot of work that we would do, what happened out of John's shop, the treasurer's shop.
Yeah, but, but if you look at Jay's memo, it says he wants this, the finance department to look at ways to reduce the budget constraints to enable to create capacity. So that's.
And John, so you'd have to do work that would move us towards the idea of bonding in order to be prepared for that workshop. So we're voting for Coville's office, for the treasurer's office, to work towards the goal of bonding so that we could discuss it at the housing, uh, whatever we're talking about doing housing thing. And that's what I just can't support, I can, I can.
That's fine if you vote no, but it's not, that's not correct. It's to give us enough information to make a decision. It's not to.
Okay, so why don't, I think that.
Can Susanna weigh in and just tell me what we're voting on, please?
Well, no, let me, I'm gonna interrupt for check as the presiding officer. I think it's for Councilmember Chenier as the maker of the motion to state the motion. And then we can hear the motion and members can vote yes or no on the motion. What is your motion, Councilmember?
So I, I wanna point back to the supplemental that we put in today that is part of your agenda. And the motion is, is to do what is listed in there. I can read the whole thing, it's a page and a half. We try to be very specific so that people would understand where we're trying to go with this. But I would, I would ask people to take a look at it, um, read it and then move forward.
Does everybody have that?
Yeah, it's part of the agenda, it's a supplemental.
Can I ask you for one clarification? Is part of your motion directing the city treasurer to initiate a possibility to, to bond?
No.
Okay, well, that's pretty clear.
Okay, Vice Mayor, do you have the memo that, uh, the council member's talking about for you? I know you're. It's in the agenda, okay. All right, Vice Mayor, anything else? You're, you're on mute, so I, I.
Yeah, I tried to turn it off because I'm on a street corner.
That's okay.
I think, I think Councilmember Harris asked the finite question I just needed to hear. So this does not include direction to the treasurer's office to work on bonding. If that's right, then I'm okay cuz we're just moving forward on a, on a housing discussion then. That, if that's what we're doing, then I'm okay. That's what I heard. Is that right, Councilmember Harris, what you asked?
That is what I asked and Jay said that.
It's not true, Jeff, what you asked was, does it initiate a bonding process? And I said, no, what I'm asking the treasurer is to give us enough information so that we can make a policy decision on this.
Okay, so let's vote up or down. Please call the roll.
So Mayor, can you reiterate who made the motion in the second?
Councilmember Chenier made the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Valenzuela, please call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Loloey?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that passes six to three. Okay, well, this will be looked at. And then we will talk about it in workshops.
Mr. Mayor?
Set direction, yep.
Can I add an item to the log, uh, to vote on whether we can remove the log?
Not tonight, but, uh, yeah.
Please no.
I, I say that in jest, but also I wanted to remind everyone that when we voted to create this log, I was concerned we'd spend an hour just discussing.
Yeah.
Item number one on the consent count.
And by the way, to the manager and the TV, every item was approved, so.
Yeah, well, I, I will also say that, that this hour spent here, if it wasn't back an hour, is time well spent so that staff is not going down a path that's not consistent with where the council wants to be. And that, that was the intent of.
No, it's, 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 it's the right intent, it is. Okay, um, let's move now to the discussion items, uh, public hearing, item eighteen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just going to share the screen here. And thanks again, Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Michael Hannibit with the Community Development Department. I'm here to present on the annual Thomas Basin HCP, uh, twenty twenty-two fee adjustment. So for a little background, the Thomas Basin habitat conservation plan applies to the entire Thomas Basin, which is well over fifty-three thousand acres located the northwestern area of Sacramento County and southern portion of Southern County. The basin contains the jurisdictions of the city, Sacramento County and Sutter County. The two thousand three HCP implementation agreement was approved by council, May thirteenth, two thousand three. And the signatory parties of this HCP include the city, Sutter County, both state and federal wildlife agencies and then the Thomas Basin Conservancy. This map gives an overview of the basin and the shaded blocks in there represents lands that are conserved or under conservation with the Thomas Basin Conservancy through this HCP. So for the fees themselves, um, the city does fully participate and support the HCP and the Conservancy. These fees, um, are implemented prior to any new grading and the development is subject to payment of those fees. The impact fees are evaluated by the Conservancy annually and our recommendation is made to the city as, as to the need for, uh, fee adjustments at a regular council meeting this tonight. Sutter County does also consider these fees as well. And this adjustment for the twenty twenty-two fees was adopted by the Thomas Basin Conservancy Board on December first, twenty twenty-one. The new fee would be forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight per dollars per gross acre of development and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars with land dedication. So this represents an increase of approximately or of thirty-nine hundred and thirty-six dollars without, for the full fee and twenty-six eighty-six with land dedication. The fee increase is necessary due to increases in land acquisition and operating costs for the Conservancy. And annual adjustments have been made over the past fifteen years, but the twenty twenty-two fee is nearly identical to the rate found in twenty ten. And so this graph here, which is also in the staff report, represents the, uh, adjustments made over the years to the fees going back fifteen years and you can see, uh, the kind of high point in twenty ten. And then after the fee dropped down from the recession, it has slowly come back up over the past few years. And so we ask for, uh, your support tonight in the fee adjustment, you know, taking questions if, if there are.
All right, thank you, um, Vice Mayor on this one.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, I think that Jeff may have his hand raised, I'm not sure if he wants to comment, but I'm happy to, uh, close the public hearing and, and move the item. But I'd love to hear if Councilmember Harris has something he'd like to say as well.
Yeah, actually, uh, I had my hand up and I was gonna do the same thing, open and close the public hearing, move the resolution. So, uh, doesn't matter who goes first or we're, we're in agreement, you've got a first and a second.
Okay, is there public testimony, I should ask?
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make public comment on this item.
Um, good, okay, then let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Loloey?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, all right, excellent. Now let's go to the last two items, I think you're gonna take some time. One's informational, one calls for action. Item twenty is an update on the comprehensive siting plan. Uh, this council now, I don't know, two months or so ago.
Uh, Mayor, are you skipping item nineteen?
You know what? I skipped item nineteen and that was not on purpose cuz that is actually a crucial item. So thank you, Councilmember Harris, do you want to introduce the item?
Well, I'd be happy to, I know that staff has a presentation, but just to set the stage.
Yeah.
Um, so I took a trip to Haven for Hope. As you know, many of our constituents have talked about that particular model of addressing homelessness. I took supervisor Desmond, our DCR staff, Hope Cooperative, uh, Metro Chamber. We all participated in a full day of going around San Antonio and looking at what they have achieved and what they haven't achieved. Um, so that sets the stage, I came back and I asked this council for, uh, a report back on coordinated access. We were calling it coordinated entry at that time and a fully developed HMIS system. Staff has come up with the report and when they're done, I'd like to make a few comments.
Okay, let's hear from the staff.
Hello, council, I have, this is Bridget Dean with the Department of Community Response. We have our program manager, Nick Golling, with us tonight, uh, to present alongside Lisa Bates from Sacramento Steps Forward on this item.
Okay, let's get going, please. Mr. Golling, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have a presentation tonight from Lisa Bates of Sacramento Steps Forward and just as kind of an introduction, would like to say that coordinated access is foundational to a well-functioning, integrated homeless response system. As you will see in the following presentation, this system will provide one front door where everyone can access the same array of services and will ensure that we learn about individual circumstances earlier in the initial risk of homelessness. With this comprehensive response, there will also be greater emphasis on problem solving, diversion and prevention measures to keep people from slipping into homelessness and reduce the increases in first-time homelessness that we've continued to see. Having this quality data about who is experiencing homelessness in our community will finally provide us the necessary information to wo- work towards actively fixing systems rather than just responding, allowing us to have a greater impact on reducing homelessness. Coordinated access will make the system easier for all involved and chiefly for those who are at risk or currently experiencing homelessness. All right, Lisa, take it away.
Okay, thank you, sorry, had to find my unmute. Lisa Bates with Sacramento Steps Forward. Thank you, Nick, for introducing the item and particularly thank you, Councilmember Harris and the mayor for promoting and bringing this item forward for the city council's ultimate approval as your mid-year budget, uh, a few weeks ago. Coordinated access proposal that we're presenting to you tonight is an important step, uh, toward organizing our community's front door uh, to homeless services, making it easier, as Nick said, to navigate the increasing variety and number of programs uh, and resources that you're investing in and will complement the work that you're doing on your comprehensive siting plan. Building out a coordinated approach across sheltering and housing resources and providing a one-stop-shop model, starting with two-on-one, is going to be critical to our long-term improvements in addressing homelessness and optimizing our shelter and housing investments. What is coordinated access system? Well, in a nutshell, it's really about managing placements for entry into sha- shelter and housing resources. We know that if you can catch people early in their homeless and housing crisis, we can be more effective, trauma-informed, and help reduce the inflow of people experiencing homelessness. We can have a greater impact on reducing a person's entry into homelessness with diversions, uh, approaches and help, um, their crises, uh, be eliminated or before they become more dire. It can improve efficiency in finding shelter and/or other crisis resources and it helps ensure that your beds that you're investing in are utilized on any given night in a well and efficient manner. Ultimately, the system needs sufficient capacity for both sheltering and housing to reduce homelessness. And today's vote, uh, discussion is focusing on improving access, but it's also, as a reminder, just as critical to simultaneously address system housing bottlenecks uh, and improve outcomes across all of our, um, programs in the homeless response system. Why do we need, uh, this? Well, one is we don't really have good data, day-to-day data about who is experiencing homelessness. Our own data researched last year and information coming from your city programs indicate that the majority of people experiencing homelessness are not in our HMIS system currently. Right now, there is also no transparent, easy way to access shelter and housing resources. It's needlessly difficult to navigate whether you are a person experiencing homelessness, a community member trying to assist or a professional working in the field. Um, is my slide's moving or are you not seeing?
They are not moving, Lisa, we're still on slide one.
Okay. Now, can you see it?
Yes, we're current system and data gaps.
Okay, so I was just remarking how, um, this approach is going to help us with having better data um, and more real-time data so that we don't have to rely on a point in time count such as we had last, last week and have real-time data that captures information about who's experiencing homelessness and who's about to experience homelessness in our front door systems. There's no easy way for us to access or to un- understand how to access shelter and housing resources. And, um, as our gaps analysis pointed out last year, we have a hundred and twelve different housing and sheltering programs and sixty-one different access points into those programs. So unless you, um, know someone or you want to dial the sixty-one different access points, it's really hard to navigate how to get into a, a sheltering or housing program effectively. And it ends up that your point of entry, uh, determines whether or not you're going to get a referral into a particular program. Additionally, we do not have a system-wide approach to diversion, which is important to address our inflow. So coordinated access systems, as was articulated previously, really has a lot of benefits, including helping to address the gaps by providing comprehensive real-time data, giving us a more understandable way to access resources and be transparent about how to access those resources through two-on-one as we're proposing. And that the data and coordinated central process will improve our use and outcomes of the investments you're making um, in your comprehensive siting plan. With this improved data, we'll be able to report out our outcomes, our learnings on a regular basis. So in a nutshell, what we're proposing is a centralized twenty-four-seven access point that is maintained by two-on-one. Sorry. Wrapping around this will be a centralized infrastructure that will increase connections to the growing outreach staff that is being provided by the city and the county. It'll hopefully bring in all the sheltering resources within our county and provide for more community-based field supports to help maintain contact with people as they're attempting to resolve their housing crisis through either diversion and problem solving or help them be ready to come into shelter and other crisis resources. The critical piece that's gonna make this successful is the contribution of the sheltering and housing resources so that we can refer people into those resources as they connect with two-on-one. We can build the backbone infrastructure, but we do have to make sure that we have places to refer people. Otherwise, it's not gonna be a, a transformational effect on our system. And as we are building the system, we want to make sure again that we're transparent and that we're reporting on this information about who is accessing our system, um, what they're getting in the way of services, how long it's taking for those services to be delivered and ultimately what is their outcome into hopefully, um, resolving their homelessness. All of this information that we hope to collect through a more enhanced HMIS investment and a, a more coordinated front door will help you evaluate and decide where, uh, best to make future investments. And it will, um, also improve our ability to divert, divert people from homelessness, um, as we build a more system approach to diversion. We know that this works, um, and we have seen this in other communities where with a coordinated front door and with a strong diversion program, you can see that a number of people will be diverted from homelessness or diverted from the resources that we need to reserve for those who absolutely need it. You will see a higher utilization of your, um, and more efficient use of your beds and, um, it will lead to overall reductions in inflow and reductions in homelessness. This is just a quick visual to show you, um, how, uh, how it would work, whether you are, um, accessing a site-based location, you're working. Whether you are accessing a site-based location, you're working with an outreach person, or you're referring yourself in for assistance, 211 will be the centralized place for getting assessments and determining what's the best path to help resolve your particular crisis. We've already been testing these processes with pilots with the Emergency Bridge Housing Program, the Meadowview Shelter Program, and the referral process with Project Rim Key, and have been establishing processes with 211. All of these have enabled us to have a strong foundation to scale this up at a system level. And the performance, we believe, will improve as the system continues to get better organized and can complement the work that you're doing to increase our shelter and housing resources. This is a quick look at the budget. We have commitments from the city of Sacramento and from the COC. The COC has actually committed $2.5 million each year for two years to address not only the basic infrastructure, but also the problem-solving and diversion support that we're building. We have the $1 million from your mid-year budget, and we anticipate that the city and the Sacramento County will be presenting, staff will be presenting a recommendation to the board within the next 60 days. We are also in active conversations with the smaller cities, and each of those staffs are in various stages of bringing forth recommendations to their council. So what this represents is what a one-year budget looks like and what are the things that you would be funding as part of that budget, including a more enhanced 211 staffing and infrastructure, expanding HMIS, providing more field-based supports, and continuing to do some work to scale up diversion supports for people who can be quickly assisted. Our commitments to you are to have monthly outcomes and outputs from the HMIS data that we'll be collecting from the front door. So who's coming in and asking for services? How are they being addressed? How long is it taking to be able to provide those services? What are their ultimate outcomes? How are we utilizing our bed capacity? And then we want to continue to work with you with quarterly insights, with more deeper information on the demographics of those that are being served. Where are there opportunities for change and iteration in the approach? Really looking at our racial equity analyses and lenses as well, and continue to bring to you process learnings because we know that this is going to be an iterative process, and we're going to learn a lot and we're going to adapt as we learn to make sure that we're really building out a very robust and successful coordinated access system. As I mentioned, we want to commit to ongoing evaluation and providing recommendations back to you on a regular basis, however you deem that needs to happen. We are working closely with your staff and with county staff. We meet weekly to build out this proposal, and they are an integral part of the development of this proposal and will continue to be. Our implementation schedule is depending on when we get all the funding secured. We anticipate we could be starting to roll in some of the city programs by May, but really want to just emphasize that our original discussions with many of the staff and with some of you all is that it's going to take several years to get up to fully launching a complete coordinated access system. So we anticipate that it'll take a few years for it to be fully operational and for all the kinks to be worked out, and that then we would hopefully be looking for a more sustainable, ongoing structure to continue to support coordinated access for our community. I want to just quickly thank again Bridget Dean and Danielle Foster and Nick for all the work that they're doing to champion this effort and to support us and to be part of the process. Our COC partners, particularly Erin Johansson and Joe Smith, have been very intimately involved in the development of this proposal. And then my own staff, while I'm here speaking, this will really be implemented by Peter Bell, our system, our coordinated entry system manager, under the thoughtful leadership of Michelle Watts and under the support of Stacy Fong, who's putting together a lot of the actual processes for us to be able to launch this. We also couldn't do this, of course, without 211 and the partnership with Gabriel. So with that, I will, I think, turn it back over to Nick for any concluding remarks.
Thank you very much, Lisa. So just, you know, in closing, and thank you so much for that presentation, but here's the truth that staff sees. The only way to properly find any solution is to first identify the problem. We have not fully identified our problem yet. We must properly use our funding and work collaboratively to build a foundation in coordinated access as well as HMIS so that those who need it most can be quickly and appropriately routed to life-saving, transformational resources and use data within HMIS to closely understand our population and build and shape programs to fit the needs of who we're serving in real time. The success of the comprehensive siting plan hinges on coordinated access and allows our community, city, and county partners, including law enforcement and fire, to have easier access to navigate those experiencing homelessness and connect them to supports quickly and efficiently. City staff and SSF would like to thank the mayor and council for their support in this proposal, and we remain available for comments and questions.
Very good. Thank you. I'll just say that this is an indispensable part of our strategy and our hope to make this better. And you may have said it, but it's worth repeating. Our $1 million is matched by Steps Forward $1 million, and I know the county itself is considering its partnering as well. So it's going to be the three entities together that are going to build this and ensure not only a single point of entry as opposed to 61, as you said, for the people we're trying to help and serve, but also be a collaborative between the city and county, which will be one of many as we continue to evolve and work to make the impact we also desperately want to make and to see. So.
Mayor, can I take it home?
Yeah, sure. Go, go.
Thanks. You know, when we went to Haven for Hope and we talked to the staff there, and it's a very good model. They've had a lot of great success. They started their program with $96 million, $56 million of private money and $40 from the city-county. They had a lot of resources to start. In the first two or three years, they floundered, as we are, because they did not, as Nick said, know the problem that they were trying to solve. They didn't have information on their homeless population. They didn't know how to efficiently wrap people to the services that they needed or for those who were ready to get into housing, to take them appropriately there. And so they were on a treadmill. They were doing a lot of work and getting nowhere. This is an essential baby step that we have never taken, and it's a really big takeaway from Haven for Hope. The fact that less than 30% of the people that we encountered that we have any data on whatsoever is pretty shocking, and it's no wonder that the efficacy of our programs, even though we have tremendous practitioners, it's no wonder that we're floundering. This is a really important first step, and I appreciate all my colleagues for voting for the $1 million to get this out of the ground. I think that we can look forward to a much more successful program addressing homelessness once we have this essential piece in place. And as the mayor pointed out, the whole point of this, the biggest point of this, was to get a city-county collaboration on something really robust so that we can share the data. And as Nick said, you know, or what Lisa said is will help us make good decisions about where to put our investments, either into housing or into services, and place them appropriately. So it's a good place to start. It's something we've needed to do, and I'm very excited to see this program move forward.
Thank you for your leadership on this, Councilman Harris. Is there public testimony on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have six hands raised so far.
Okay, let's hear from the six, please.
The first is Erin Johansson.
Erin?
Yes, hello. Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Erin Johansson. I'm the CEO of Hope Cooperative, but also I am the chair of the COC Board this year. And I am so excited to have this finally in front of you and appreciate so much your support, support of Councilmember Harris going to the Haven for Hope, as he talked about so eloquently. What's transformative about this is as a provider, we have been so frustrated with not even being able to help the people that we serve find resources in our community, and we know where they all are. So imagine being a person living on the streets, trying to find those same resources. This is transformative, and as Jeff really said, well, this is a first step, but it's such an important step. It's critical to have the resources all in one place. It's critical to have one phone number to call. It's critical to have the city and the county and the COC all rowing in the same direction. So I'm really happy that you have allowed this to come forward and that you have supported it, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is PJ.
Yes, I would just like to say that I wholeheartedly support this. It's heartbreaking to see the myriad of unhoused folks that I come across, feeding them to find out about the various hard times that they've had being able to access services and the inability of them often to wait for long hold times when they have very limited access to power to be able to charge their phones, when their phones aren't capable of accessing some of the websites. It's very imperative that they, that this go forward and is able to provide them with that access and that point of reference where they can actually get some assistance without having to call multiple locations, multiple agencies, wait for many hours on hold just to try and get the barest bit of access. The other thing I would say is I'm looking forward to in future years the proactive model of reaching out to people and having people reach out prior to them actually becoming unhoused, because there are a lot of people out there who might be just one paycheck away, as we know a huge chunk of the country is, from actually homelessness. And so if we're able to get to them first and able to actually address the issues that are at play, we could save a ton of people, and it saves a lot of money on the long run from having that money go out and help them once they're unhoused. It's so much easier to just keep them in the housing and address the few small issues that might be at play that might be addressing their issues of being able to hold onto that housing. So I look forward to that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
Hi, this is Robert Copeland. This plan will not work unless you help people get on SSI, CalFresh, get their ID, get job training. The ultimate goal is permanent housing for the homeless population. And as the second attendance unit says, we only want rent increase away from homelessness. Thank you. And I will be speaking on two other items, including matters not on the agenda.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Charles Ware. Charles Ware, if you'll unmute. We'll go to the next person, Kathleen Williams.
My name is Kathleen Williams. I'm a constituent of Katie Valenzuela, and I am a part of the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee and the Poor People's Campaign. I see the necessity for the HMIS, for the data system. There's thousands of people who are stranded and scattered and not reached by services. However, if there's nothing behind HMIS, nothing will change. And if the council passes this measure, it makes sense to have the 24/7 triage centers be continued rather than being de-authorized and replaced by weather-dependent shelters. Because the thing about 24/7 is that it stabilizes people. It becomes a node of contact. It is very important for health because if you have showers and bathrooms, access to services. You know, that is what the HMIS should really look like. It should be coordinated with the strategic locations to bring people into the fold. So I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sharina Latch. Sharina Latch? Sharina Latch, if you'll unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, great. Sorry about that. Good evening, Chair and Councilperson from Sacramento. My name is Sharina Latch, and I would just like to read something addressing item 19. When you create a pandemic, homelessness tends to happen. When you create the shortage of jobs, homelessness tends to happen. When you don't prosecute criminals and let them go free, homelessness tends to happen. When you isolate people, causing depression, and then they have a sense of helplessness, that takes over. Homelessness tends to happen. When the high prices of fuel at the pumps and inflation shoots up, homelessness tends to happen. When you give $600 a month to a homeless person, but he or she can't pay the rent, homelessness tends to happen. When PG&E fails their communities and people lost their homes, homelessness tends to happen. My recommendation would be that you end the mandates and get people back to work. That would work towards the budget, stop wasting taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Charles Ware. Charles, if you're unmute. Mayor, there appears I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to continuing reports on this as the timeline you laid out, Lisa, proceeds and that we get going as quickly as possible. Thank you all very much. Let's now go to item number 20, which is the comprehensive siting plan update. I'm going to have the staff present on that. I'm going to lead off with some comments, and we'll take it from there. Go ahead.
Mayor, I'm going to kick this off and turn it over to Chris Collin and Bridget Dean here. But as you know, this item is coming before you as a result of the request from the council to get periodic updates in open session on the comprehensive siting plan in addition to the weekly updates we provide to the council. This first one took a little while for us to get before you. As you will see, there were lots of information, financial data, contracts and the like. But you will see this on a monthly basis as a standing item coming before you. And so with that, I think I'm turning it over to Chris first, or is it Bridget?
I can take it, Howard.
There it is.
Bridget's a better speaker than me. She should talk first.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chris. If you wanted to go, I'll step aside for a moment.
No, you are fine. Go ahead, Bridget.
All right, I'm actually going to be presenting this tonight with Ryan Moore, our Director of Public Works. So my name is Bridget Dean, and I am the Director of the Department of Community Response. I will have the first few slides, and then Ryan will take it from there. Go ahead, Ryan. So I want to start out by sharing two snapshots, and I want to be real clear on this, that this is a snapshot of what sheltering looks like for us here in the city and what our costs are. And we work with myriad of partners to provide shelter, and many of them are on this list. But what I really wanted to use this initial slide for was to just give you a picture of one-year cost for a site and exactly what it comes down to for a basic cost per person per day. And I say basic because everybody we deal with in homelessness and who are experiencing homelessness has multiple and complex issues, many of them. And so what may start out looking like a $32 a night if they need excessive services or additional services can increase based on that. So we spoke here, I'm pointing out here, North Fifth Street Shelter, which many of you know was on the siting plan, and that has been completed with an additional 41 beds available that is up and running. Our Meadowview Shelter, Grove Avenue, which is our Transitional Age Youth Program, our Women and Family Shelters. our Women and Family Shelters, our five contracts.
Bridget, really quick question on Grove Avenue, if I could. Is that as expensive as it is, as it is because we're only doing half the numbers?
Yes.
So if we had 48 versus the 24?
It would reduce. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, thank you for mentioning that, Councilmember. All of our shelter numbers and costs that I'm sharing tonight have been impacted by the pandemic. As many of you know, congregate shelter was reduced, and so some of the stats and other things I show tonight may reflect that. So Women and Family Shelters, we have five contracts total. And again, these specifically addressed women and family in crisis or need, including our domestic violence partners and others who support women who are experiencing violence and crisis. Our youth shelters is another program, and I list varies on this simply because many of our contracts that work with our youth in particular have very specific resources and services they provide. And again, it is really based on that youth at that time, what is best fit for them and what's needed. Our X Street Navigation was also on our siding plan. That, that is listed here. Our Safe Grounds, which currently consists of Front Street, Miller Park, and as you saw tonight on Consent, possibly the Colfax. Prior to that, we had the WX location between Sixth and Eighth Streets, which is now closed, and we are, been transitioning over. And then our City Motel Program, which is funded by the city using FEMA reimbursement dollars and other funds. But that is a program that I'll speak to here in just a moment. Go ahead, Ryan. So our other snapshot is our non-sheltering programs. Again, just want to give a picture of the other things that we are doing to assist our, our residents who are experiencing homelessness currently in the city. And that is a myriad of programs from our River District Program, where we work with our River District Partners, to ensure clean and safe programming and availability to do outreach and supports. Homeless Encampment Cleanups, many of you know as Forensic Clean, is one of those programs. Our Hope Cooperative Motel Voucher Program Line, which recently ended, that was one of our big steps into the idea of a coordinated access point for voucher programs and our hotel rooms, which was successful. Our Hope Cooperative Outreach Program is another one that we currently have. They do provide our, our outreach partners currently. And as we are moving forward with additional funding for mid-year, we'll be expanding outreach team with other community-based organizations. Hope Cooperative, again, is overseeing our respite outreach and engagement operations that are pending. Step Up provides us a great ability to provide our case management in many of our hotels, and they've been an immense partner for us. Councilmember Guerra has been a strong advocate of our fuel organization, which we continue to support. And then the Detox Center that Councilmember Harris and others have supported is located in that snapshot of what we are operating here in the city. So this is just a quick overview of using some of that HMIS data that we have been able to collect for our various programs and centers. And so I thought it would be good just to share overall what we are seeing as far as success rates and who we are serving. So if you see here, the North Fifth Street Shelter has a total of 163 beds now. That is with our 41-bed expansion in January. That, that contract has served a total of 467 individuals, where we've housed 69 and temporarily 117. Our X Street Navigation, which opened in September of '21, has already served 213 individuals. They have been able to permanently house 18 and temporarily house seven. Again, X Street, Meadowview and North Fifth were all reduced numbers due to the pandemic. And frankly, some of our additional increases in positive cases have also reduced some of the impact to serve. However, they are all back up and running full speed here. And then our Meadowview Navigation Center, which we know serves women only, they have served 352 with 65 permanent and 16 temporary. I did not offer stats on these programs. Mainly, I just wanted to point out that to Councilmember Shanir's point, Grove has been at 24 beds due to the pandemic and currently was built for capacity of 48. Again, our Women and Children's Program, such phenomenal partners, St. John, City of Refuge, we've, many of our other partners have been an immense resource, working with our families and our women and children who are experiencing homelessness and need supports and case management. And then our youth programs, we could not do the work we do in the city without our youth programs that consistently step up and support not only those experiencing homelessness, but those of us who are working to get those young people off the streets. And then our Safe Ground and Safe Parking, as you know, we've had three sites have been operational here in the city, Miller Park being the most recent. Our WX Safe Ground, which was our first, our first step into the water, was a learning lesson for all of us, but as you can see, we were able to serve 453 individuals. We were able to permanently house 34 and temporarily house 159 of those individuals. South Front Street was opened around the same time, is still operating. That is a safe parking only with 50 vehicles max. We served 70 different individuals, and we have been able to permanently house nine, temporarily house 23. Miller Park, which just opened on February 7th, we are currently at a capacity of 48. We have already permanently housed one individual and have been able to temporarily house two. And at this point, Colfax would be a 30-vehicle location that would provide the same operations and supports as the other three, and that's scheduled currently right now for April 2022. And then I just want to touch base on the City Motel Program. As you all know, Mayor, the establishment of this program was in December of 2020 and the need that we had to get individuals up and off the streets for a little bit longer periods of time and also amidst the pandemic. We are at 370 rooms. Those vary by location throughout our city. We have specific sites that serve specifically families, women and children. We do have a FEMA reimbursement in place, which has assisted us in funding this program. That ends as of 4/1/2022. However, we would need around $14 million to continue our motel program. And I want to stress, the $14 million is not just the cost of the rooms. That is the cost of all of our case management and other programming that we offer individuals who are in our motel program. To date, we have served 1,074 individuals. We've been able to permanently house 59 and temporarily house 26. What we have found, especially with women and children, is the motel for many of them is their first permanency for some period of time, and they tend to take a little bit longer for us to get into that next step of support. However, we have, again, I can't say enough about our phenomenal programs there. And I know, Mayor, you've seen one of those hotels yourself and met some of those families we served. Go ahead. And then I want to just touch base on Forensic Clean. I know this is a popular item for all of us, for this entity. This is another non-shelter program that we fund. And I just thought I would share some stats. In April 1st of 2021, we started using 311 as our primary location for our community to request Forensic Clean to follow up on homeless encampment, trash collection and other. And to date, they've taken out over 43,000 tons of trash and 27,000 hypodermic needles. Additionally, just on the right there, you can see the various things that that funding supports. We are now at multiple teams across the city, and we have been able to address the needs of the community and our partners, as well as city departments fairly quickly. And then this is just a recap of our mid-year. As you can see here, our mid-year costs that were approved by the council is the highlighted in green. Those were the areas that came towards homelessness. So the, the mayor had introduced an alternative option, and all of you voted. And this is the Department of Community Response's outreach at 2.8 million. Our Sacramento Steps Forward Coordinated Access System, which you just saw a presentation on. And then our Women and Children's Shelter Extension of 2 million. And then again, the fuel network was funded as well. On the other side of that graph, you see our Sheltering and Service Contracts. And this is just to point the, to point out the additional 10 million that we were granted from ARPA funds for our mid-year contract extensions. All of these programs are ongoing, and we've been able to continue those due to that mid-year grant from all of you. Go ahead, Ryan.
Okay, and with that, I will jump into an update on the siding plan. So this is, the last time you heard this presentation was on December 14th. We went through all of the sites in the siding plan and talked about where we had been with them and what the status was. So we'll, we'll get into that, and then we'll, we'll finish out with some new things that have come on the radar screen since that update in December. So the siding plan, obviously approved in August, 20 different sites in that, that staff have been looking at, cost estimating, working with stakeholders, doing technical feasibility work on over the last several months. First one, I'll start with the Roseville Road RT Station. So this one, the design is essentially complete. We are still working on a three-part agreement between the city, Caltrans and Sacramento Regional RT. The key term in that, that I think affects our thinking on it is, is, would be limited to a 12-month term out there, then we would need to wind up operations and vacate the site. And that's mainly a requirement being put on the table by the Federal Transit Administration. The capacity would be approximately 50 vehicles. Construction cost is about $500,000. Operations cost is estimated at about $2 million per year. The Colfax Yard, this is a city-owned corp yard that has been vacated for a number of years. So we were able to get concurrence from the State Water Board on use of that site, which was a big win. However, due to the large number of people that have informally sort of encamped there, the Water Board did send us a letter and say we needed to clean those folks up and move them off the site for their own health and safety. I think, we think there's close to 80 or 90 folks out there. Once the site is open as a safe parking, it would have a capacity of approximately 30 vehicles. The, the next steps are about a $600,000 design phase. And again, similar to Roseville Road, about 200, I'm sorry, 2 million per year in operating costs. The Eleanor Yard, this is another city corp yard, legacy corp yard. So we have finished the design and the permitting for a, a cabin, sleeping cabin facility. However, due to the cost of that, and we'll get into that more in a minute, we have also evaluated as a possible safe parking site. So the pallet homes are going to be going to Sacramento County for their use. The construction cost, if we wanted to go with the cabin-oriented facility, would be about 3 million. Converting it to safe parking is about 400,000. Again, operations for safe parking would be about $2 million a year. The city-owned site, it's actually owned by Rossa at Dixie and Lexington. So we have completed a conceptual design for a cabin-based facility. There is a significant amount of site work needed just due to the contours and the drainage on site. So the construction for a cabin-based facility would be about 4.6 million. If we wanted to look at instead going at just a safe parking type of arrangement, that's about a little over a million and a half. Again, operations fairly consistent from all these different kinds of safe parking operations. Ross and Court, this is owned by RD 1000 Flood Control Agency. This is right off of North Gate and I-80 in North Sacramento. So this site continues to be encumbered by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. For their use is a lay-down area as part of a flood control project. Site control, if, is really dependent when the corps finishes. We think that will be later this year. Construction cost would be around $500,000 there, with again, about a $2 million annual operating cost. Joshua's House, this is a proposed hospice care facility by a private operator on patio and North Gate. So the lease agreement is in place. We have executed a lease with that private entity. We are now waiting for them to bring forward a private application for development of that site. The North Fifth Street Shelter, Bridget already touched on that. It's a city-county collaboration at existing shelter off of North Fifth Street in the River District. WX Site, so this is underneath the WX Freeway between W and, I'm sorry, between 19th and 23rd Street. So this is one that we've looked at. There are some issues with stipulations created by the Streets and Highways Code for putting facilities for unhoused people underneath freeway structures that complicate the issue a little bit. There is also a relatively high cost for implementation here. There's a regulatory piece. Additionally, there is a legal challenge the city is looking at. So this site has been stagnant a little bit due to some of those issues. The Florin Road Site, this is a light rail station off of Florin Road. So it is no RT board action on it so far. The direction we've had from D5 is to wait until some of our other RT sites start to move forward as test cases, and then we could look at this one. Already mentioned Roseville Road in a minute. I'm gonna talk about the other light rail site at Franklin. So this also would be subject to the same FTA requirement of only a 12-month term if we did open a safe parking operation on the site. City-owned parcel at 24th Street and 48th, no difference from when we heard about this in December. Due to its proximity to Executive Airport, there are land use restrictions, and it has been eliminated for further consideration. The site on 29th Avenue, this is a privately owned site. Due to its size and some of the other concerns of the neighborhood, it's been eliminated from further consideration as a safe ground site. However, I know our housing manager, Danielle Foster, has looked at it for possible other uses, and I think she's still evaluating those. The site at Riza and Jimoline, it's a former modular home development, so it's privately owned. The owner has chosen not to move forward to work with the city on a safe parking or safe ground site. So it has also been eliminated from further consideration. Site off of 21st Avenue at 63rd Street, this is the Vigian Church. Again, privately owned, eliminated from further consideration. Seventh Day Administ Church, this is at 6701 Lemon Hill. Again, same story, privately owned, eliminated from further consideration. The Franklin Boulevard RT Site, so this is at Consumersboro Boulevard and Franklin. The RT Board has given action to their staff to work with the city on a possible safe parking site here. District Eight is engaged with some, in some outreach efforts with their community. This site, again, if we did choose to move forward with it, would be subject to the same FTA approval and 12-month limitation on operations. Lastly, Meadowview Village, so this is another privately owned site off of Meadowview, just across the street from our Meadowview Navigation Center. Also, due to the private ownership, eliminated from further consideration. Now, although it wasn't on the original siding plan, I wanted to mention it because it has come up and been a topic our last few months. Lot Z at Cal Expo is one that has been made available to the city. It is located on the water side of the primary American river levee. The Corps of Engineers, we've engaged in dialogue with them. They have not expressed a large degree of support for it. If we did want to pursue it, they are one of several flood control agencies that would have regulatory purview. The permitting process would be extensive, so this one is on hold pending some of the other, other sites that we are currently working on. So that's the sites that were in the comprehensive siding plan, and it's kind of a rundown of where they're at. We've had, as you can tell, limited success really getting them off the ground. However, since we started looking at this, there are a number of other sites that have come to our attention that have started to show a little bit more promise, and we've had a little bit more momentum putting them out. We've turned this the updated work plan. So really, the next sites we're gonna go through are the sites that are currently on the high priority list. They're the ones that are getting the active engagement from staff. So the first three, I'm gonna ask Bridget to opine on them because they're actually up and running.
Thanks, Ryan. So as I shared earlier, we currently have Miller Park established onsite. We have 60 tents. We could serve up to 100 people. However, we are at 48. This operation has been successful since February 7th and is a great example of using some of the lessons we learned at WX. So this is an operational site. Go ahead, Ryan. Our Auburn Boulevard Service Hub, this is the former science museum. We have spent $100,000 in capital improvements to prepare this. This site is ready to open and is able to be used. We have our contract in place and vendors available to serve individuals at the site. Our North Street Shelter, North Fifth, as I already shared, we, the goal was to expand beds. We did at 41 currently, which we are now using and are able to have access to. This is a city-county partnership, and this has also been operational and completed off of the siding plan.
Bridget, before you go on?
Sure.
I noticed in your previous stats that North Fifth was doing pretty well in cost per person per night and also the number of people housed. Is that because Shelter Inc. is doing a great job? I mean, the numbers were pretty striking, that this is performing extremely well. So can you tell me why?
I would say Shelter Inc. is doing a good job, and I think the establishment in the community has been well-formed and with providers. The other thing I will say is their use of HMIS to create and maintain current data for us. We are able to get that data and access it quickly and work specifically with them. But they've been great partners, and they are running a good shelter.
Is there any possibility we could expand more beds there? Because at first blush, it looked like we could.
Yes, and what occurred with that particular shelter, Councilmember, is the, we had a hospital beds that were available to those who needed a little. the, we had hospital beds that were available to those who needed a little more supports, and there's 18 of those on site. So that was expanded up to 163 with 41 being available co-ed as we need them, with the 18 being focused on our individuals who may need more supports and have medical needs.
Well, it really seems to be working well, so maybe there are lessons to be gleaned there.
Yes, it was. It's been a good partnership. Absolutely.
Okay. One other site I did want to mention, we don't have a slide for it because it really hasn't gotten off the ground too much, but a few questions have been asked about the former Sleep Train Arena, or some people know it as the former Arco Arena. The reason that hasn't been pursued is simply the city doesn't own it. It's owned by the Sacramento Kings. Obviously, just two weeks ago, we approved the entitlement package for the Innovation Park Project, so for those reasons, the Arco Arena or the Sleep Train Arena site has not been pursued as a as a site. So some of the big news, the city has acquired a 102-acre site in South Sacramento between Meadowview Road and Consumers Boulevard. So this is a job, the former Job Corps site, the city has come to acquire. Again, District Eight is engaged in outreach activities with the neighborhood down there. The big challenge with this site is there really is no access to it. It's landlocked on the north by commercial uses and on the south by private land. So we are working with the federal government to get an easement through their property that borders on the north to come through our Meadowview Corp Yard to get to the site. Between putting the improvements in place that would allow us to get through and access controlled facilities such as our corp yard, get across the federal property and then onto our site and construct a safe parking-type facility, we are estimating that is going to cost between $8 and $10 million. Obviously, subsequent to that, a site this large could be used for any number of possible future uses for affordable housing or what have you. And then the last site on our work plan is the downtown service hub. So this is an opportunity site in the central city that we are still about evaluating. The location's not been made public yet.
And I will chime in and not get into a lot of details on this site, but we are working in partnership with the county to implement a service hub downtown that is pretty significant, and we've been working on this for a couple of months now, and hopefully, I mean, I don't, I know that Councilmember Valenzuela consistently asks me, when do we think this is going to happen? And I don't want to say next week, but it is soon, soon to come. And Mayor may want to chime in as well because he's been working on this as well.
Well, I guess I do want to say something, and I don't know if it's timely, but it is interesting and understanding and agreeing with and respecting that Councilmember Vang has big plans for that 102 acres and is large enough, I think, to accommodate a lot of things. And she's, I know, beginning a big community engagement process there, but when you really look at it, we could establish some hubs here in our city to the north, the downtown, and the south area in ways that could lead to greater economies of scale than some of the smaller sites that are expensive and that accommodate fewer people. And so this downtown site, which, you know, we obviously cannot be public about in terms of its location yet, is a tremendous opportunity. Not only our collaboration with the county, they've been terrific in working with us with the prospective buyer and the broker, prospective seller and the broker, but also what it could mean for a more comprehensive campus kind of approach that we all we all strive for. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it all takes a long time, too long. But I think we are getting, we are getting there on this particular opportunity.
And I think the question of economies of scale is a perfect segue for Ryan to move on in the presentation when we start looking at resources available for existing and then the expansion of these new work plan sites and then ongoing operations, right?
Yeah, so thanks for bearing with it, everybody. This is the last slide. So the $41 million commandment that was made by council back in September. This is an outline of where that funding has been allocated. Obviously, we have our work sites at the top, the Meadowview site, Auburn site, the Miller Park site, and the downtown service hub. That totaled just under $21 million. Implementation expenses for a lot of the different programs Bridget mentioned, non-sheltering programs, not everything we do is shelter. So there have been a significant amount of work between staff time, consultant time, little paving projects here and there on all the sites that total about $600,000. Item seven on consent tonight moved about $2.2 million for operations of the Miller Park site and the Colfax site. Expansion of forensic clean services, that's been very successful around the whole city, just keeping city clean, the right-of-way clean. Substance use respite program. Animal Service, I won't read them all, you can read them. The the non-shelter, the implementation stuff is totaled just about just under 19 million. So what that, where that leaves us is of the original $41 million, there is just under $2 million remaining.
Ryan, I'm going to stop you there for just a second. So what this does not take into account is when we launched the comprehensive siting plan back in August, the mayor put together, along with the council, approving a $100 million spending plan. What this does not reflect is the other $60 million that are a combination of state and federal funds, and we could talk about that in a little bit between Danielle Foster can talk about the half-two and half-three funding, and then the the ESG and home money. SHRA can chime in as well, but I'm not going to derail Ryan's presentation. I'll ask that we talk about the status of the other 60 million following the slide.
Okay, so when additional funding becomes available, a few other things that are on on the shopping list that we will potentially want to look at. The Colfax site, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, and the Roseville Road site both have construction costs that are outstanding. The downtown service hub, we haven't completely finished due diligence on it, so we can't talk about it tonight, but we do expect there will be significant amount of capital improvements needed. 30 million plus seems fairly conservative. As I mentioned, the Job Corps site, just for access into implement a safe parking location, we're thinking 8 million is kind of a floor to what that number might be. Some other ongoing costs that we have, the downtown service hub, when that opens, it will need operations, as is the case with Roseville Road. The Auburn Boulevard site, we talked about earlier, has funding up through the end of December 23. After that, if we wish to keep it going with new funding, Miller Park has funding up through this June, so starting in July, it would need additional funding for annual operations. Colfax site, same thing, it's but has operations up through June through the consent item that's on the on the item number seven tonight. Additionally, forensic clean, if we want to keep it at the current service level, would need an annual $1 million allocation. DCR operations, some augmentations there that are not currently in budget would need an additional $3 million per year. And of course, a lot of, there's a lot of more of the non-sheltering service items that total about $13 million a year. So the 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 need that we would have is one-time funding to the tune of about $40 million and ongoing costs in the range of 30 or 32 million dollars a year. So we will need additional funding if we want to pursue these.
Right, and and just to be clear, I know there's a lot of numbers and a lot of information, which is why it took us a little while to pull this all together because we have so many different moving parts and contracts that come before this council. The goal here was to try and pull it all together in a way that at a minimum gives everyone the order of magnitude of all the things we've been working on relative to homelessness. So if you're looking on this slide here on the left in blue, you can think of that as we have that $41 million less the 1.9 gets us through June 30, the balance of this fiscal year. And then on a go-forward basis to maintain what we have and to do some expansion on, you know, the the one-time cost up top, but just to maintain our current operations is somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 million ongoing that at this point has not been identified. But that's where I want to talk a little bit about the $60 million in state and federal funds that we are anticipating coming down in the status. And I don't know if LaChelle is on the call here and Danielle.
Howard, if I may, just
Yeah.
one other framing comment. Obviously, right, this this shows us the gap a one-time and ongoing, but we're going to now hear a little bit about the $60 million that some of which has not been received yet by the city, but is been passed in law by either the federal or state government. That's one. But the other things that are not included in terms of sources of revenue are the governor's 2223 budget. And remember, Sacramento just got designated as the first pro-housing city with the promise of incentive points for the new state dollars, both on the housing and on the shelter side. It doesn't include the emerging and growing county partnership that may be solidified around one or more of the items here. And it also doesn't account for the end-year balance and next year's city budget, which again, all recent history shows that there's usually more resources. So I just want to put $32 million in perspective. It is a lot of money, but I think when you start chopping away at these various categories that I mentioned and maybe more, that $32 million can get reduced fairly readily to be able to do the things we are doing and the things that are on on the sheet that are at the beginning, at the beginning stages of implementation. Okay, I know Councilmember Valenzuela had one comment about Miller Park before we move on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a quick two, well, I'll save my other comments. I just, I have two comments now. I'll just make it one. I will say first that I just want to commend the city team because I think what this presentation shows is that you've moved mountains in the last few months, and I want to recognize that none of this is something that we're trained for, prepared for, that we do on a normal basis, and that that was really commendable, and I would challenge any other city in our county or even the county themselves to show us a presentation with that much progress in it for these last few months. So just want to commend the team. But I do want to mention, because I know Bridget mentioned Miller Park is not at capacity, and just to make sure that it's super clear why, because we have identified all 60 tents that are going to be moving into that location. The movement is ongoing from X Street and O'Neil Park on Caltrans property. We've been working with Caltrans to sync up when they need to secure their property with when we can get people into shelter beds or safe ground, and that work is ongoing for these next couple of weeks. So I don't want, I want to make sure the public is super clear on that site does not open 12 spots that those 12 or so spots are spoken for, and I really commend the DCR team. If you haven't been out there or seen the videos on KCR3, it's going really well. They've already moved more than three people out of the site, and just want to give props that that's humming along as it was designed, and I hope that we could continue moving at that clip of getting people into housing and services. Because if so, it might not be needed that long, and that would be great as well. But yeah, thank you again, Howard, and I'll add more after the public comment.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Okay. Howard, are we going to continue then with Danielle's presentation and LaChelle's, Danielle Foster and LaChelle Dozier's presentation on the half-three and four money that we're anticipating and how that all fits into the whether it can help offset any, that can help offset the the ongoing gap that you described in your prior slide?
Yep, yep. So that $60 million gets broken out, as you know, about 45 million of it is going to be the half-two, half-three, and the balance is home and ESG funding. So maybe we start with LaChelle first, just to talk about that 15 million and the status of the funds and whether it's been allocated yet or not.
So thank you, Howard. I think one of the things that's important to also mention is a part of the homeless, the comprehensive siting plan was also the commitment to create homes through Project Home Key, and those were the motel conversions. And so we started working on that immediately. We're, there were six, I believe, that were planned. We're now at three and still working on another one that's going to be coming forward on the county side relatively soon. And so some of the dollars that are in the $15 million that SHRA is under our purview are ones that have come before you for your approval. So and those projects are Central Sacramento Studios, which is the motel across the street from the agency, Vista Nueva, which is the project out in North Natomas. And then North View Point is another one, which are all homeless units, and that is the third one. Then in addition to that, are, those are all our home funds and the home ARPA that was identified in the $41 million. In addition to that, under the ESG, which is the emergency shelter grant, there was money set aside for rapid rehousing and then a few dollars that also went into the North Fifth Shelter. So of the 15 million, 12 million has already been appropriated and designated for all of those projects. And then there's the 3 million is for funding that comes in the following year. So we have not received the funding for fiscal year '23 yet. And that's 3 million. So.
That comes at the beginning of the calendar year, LaChelle?
Yes, because we are on a calendar year, and we're still under continuing resolution, even when at the federal government, they don't have their budget approved yet.
Okay. Thanks, LaChelle. And Danielle, can you talk about the home or the half-two and the half-three funding and the status of those funds and whether we receive them yet or what what the anticipated timeline is and whether or not we have them allocated for projects already?
Sure, I just want to start by highlighting what we funded with half-one, just to give a frame of reference for the types of programs that have been supported through the funds. And then going forward, we have gotten our half-two funding. A little over 2 million of it is going towards LaMancha, one of the round-one Home Key projects. We've set aside 3.4 million towards tiny homes as part of our plan response, and then our youth shelter contracts that are in place. Half-funds require us to set aside funding for youth sheltering. With half-three, we, we have an amount that we've been awarded. It's actually 16 million, but after you take out the youth set aside and the admin, that's when, that's why I brought it down to the 13.8. So if you want to throw in the youth shelters, it's a little bit more, but we have not allocated those funds. We've, we've seen the first draw of that. We're starting to access the money, but we are required to put a plan in place with the COC and the county in order to access the full amount. So we've been working on that. And the estimate from the state has been that half-four will probably be the same. The one caveat there is that they're waiting to see how point and time count information comes in. As you all know, last week, we did our point and time count. We've been working on that. And so since we haven't had updated numbers for a couple of years due to COVID, the state's looking to see how those numbers turn up in communities before they make final allocations. And then there's been conversations about bonus funding as well, but we don't have more information about that at this point in time. So similar to some of what I think Bridget covered, just to give perspective on some of the annual costs for our navigation centers and North Fifth Street, the two-year cost at Grove, that's pre-expansion, and the motel voucher program costs, and just how that kind of compares to what we're seeing for the upcoming half dollars. Hopefully, that provides a pretty good overview for the council on sort of where we're at. And then we do have some pending FEMA reimbursement money that we're waiting on as well.
Danielle, Danielle, one quick question that I think is really important here on this slide. Without this new money, how far into the future are we funded for the Meadowview Navigation Center, X Street Navigation, North Fifth Street Grove, and the motel voucher program? What is our, if we didn't have half-three and four, how far would it get us, would we get with our existing funds?
So it varies by each of these contracts, but either between the end of the fiscal year or the end of the calendar year. Of course, with the motel voucher program, the FEMA reimbursement is going to go away April 1, as was mentioned earlier. But we do have some funding to keep that going, but would need additional funding to keep it going after the fiscal year. Um but we do have some funding to keep that going, but would need additional funding to keep it going after the fiscal year.
It it would be, Mayor, it would be catastrophic if we didn't have those potential funds coming in, because all these things we spent time, effort and resources.
No, I get it. I'm just trying to understand, and I know the council question is all the money for half-three and four spoken for, that's the question. And the answer is pretty much yes.
Well, if I could ask, is that okay, Mayor, to ask just a quick clarifying question? Is there, I I hope, A, I hope we put these slides online somewhere because I know I get asked these questions a lot and it would be super helpful to have them referenced. But is there, because like you just showed us a chart of city general fund money and the ARPA funding and where that went. And I think, did I see some of these costs listed there as well? Like, is there one chart that kind of lays out all of the funding and all of the current expenses and and projected expenses that we could see in one chart?
I mean, I don't know if we have something tonight, but we could put something together.
Yeah, not tonight. I just meant like in in general, yeah.
Yeah, we we could get something put together.
The sixty, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, because like when I see this money, I'm like, okay, that makes me feel a little less stressed about the chart I just saw. But like, I don't know if I'm missing something because they're spread out across like different charts.
And it has to do with the timing of the contracts. As Danielle pointed out, some uh, you know, they they end at the end of the fiscal year. Some go into the the balance of the calendar year. And that's where, you know, the the focus on the work plan is critical. We don't get um sidetracked by looking at new sites to get introduced, because uh it it would be um not, it would not be a good idea to start uh looking at new programming that hasn't been considered already, because we have not identified funding for existing programming. And uh with the caveat that the downtown service hub, one hundred and one acres, the ones that we've talked about in this session.
No, that would be helpful. Yeah, and I'll look for, I'll talk to you offline about getting that together, because um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. I I think that's, and what about, did did LaShaw go through, does Dozier go through the ESG and the home?
She did. She, you know, I'm sorry, LaShaw, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had to walk away for a second. Apologies. Okay.
Yes, I did. Um, did you want me to go back over?
No, 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 don't waste anybody else's time. I I I got it.
Okay.
So we, you know, we're thirty million short to do the downtown hub, the hundred and two acres, the uh the new initiatives, um the new initiatives, that's kind of the takeaway. Okay?
That's very, I just, quick question. I just want to make sure I have my numbers right. So based on what we have, Howard, the ongoing cost, the annual cost to maintain these facilities, um I have it roughly around forty-three, forty-four million dollars a year between non-shelter and uh shelter, just the annual cost. Is that, am I?
It it's approximately thirty-three million plus or minus. Uh and in the new year, the new fiscal year starting uh July one, uh if we're to um implement some of these uh priority sites under the work plan, we'd need approximately forty million dollars in one time. Now, the the reality is that we don't need it all come July one, because we we couldn't spend that money that quickly. So probably over the course of two years, uh we need uh some of that one-time funding to do capital improvements to these sites that we would acquire. The the upside of that is that these would be longer-term solutions. They would not be, you know, thirty-site locations. These would be significant sites uh where we would have a full partnership with the county uh in in title on on properties and also in uh in carrying the expense for the ongoing costs. Because quite frankly, the ongoing costs are are more uh expensive than the one-time capital improvements.
So I guess my next question is, based on an, uh based on the ongoing costs, not the one-time costs, because there's funding for that that we can get from state and what have you. The ongoing cost, what, how long do you think we can absorb that? Let's say there is no funding or continuous funding from state or the feds.
Well, we have the thirty-three, roughly thirty-three million dollars. Uh but the mayor did uh line out all those opportunities for funds to come in, but at this point in time, uh we don't have them. And and so if they were to materialize the way that the mayor suggested, uh we'd be good for another year. If if they don't, uh we wouldn't, and everything in between, because the timing of these dollars coming in, uh some of the strings that are attached with how we spend these dollars now, uh will will kind of play into that. But it, yeah, high, high level. Now, if funding comes in, again, the the way the mayor laid out, we could potentially go on for another year. Uh and uh and but that also doesn't account for, I don't know if you said this, Mayor, but the um the partnership with the county.
I did mention that as a potential source of money, because uh if we're not going it alone, then we don't pay the, we we don't pay the full freight. Look, um I I think this is helpful even if it's inexact. I mean, it it's thirty-plus million dollars ongoing. It's a gap to do the existing shelters, the existing non-shelter programs, and to do the initiatives that were described on the on the, and and yes, um do we have long-term source of funding? Uh at this point, no, but I will tell you this. Uh every single year skeptics have said, you're not going to find the money to be able to do what we have done. And then we have done it. Okay? And what's the choice? Uh i- if we don't get the money, then we're not going to be able to continue it. I mean, that's, or we're going to have to make some decisions about triaging down. But we get the money in this city. We do. I've been pretty successful at it. We're successful at it together. And these projects, larger projects, could be the opportunity that we have been seeking for a long time.
I
Yeah.
I have one quick more question. Sorry to ask so many technical questions and I, sorry again that I didn't ask these in advance, so you could be prepared with this, Howard. So if you don't have the answer, don't worry. Um so we we've exhausted the funding question and that's super helpful, because I hear a lot of people say, oh, I heard you had a hundred million. Shouldn't everybody be off the street now? And I think it's important for people to understand where that money goes and how far it stretches. But when we talk about quantity, like how many people can be served? So let's say every site that's on that work plan opens. All of our current sites stay open. What are we looking at in terms of capacity in the system um for new spots for folks um to be?
The the downtown service hub, we're calling it, uh that's TBD to to work out with the county, depending on how we want to use that facility, because as you know, it's a very, it's a significant property. Uh I don't know, Bridget, Bridget's still on here. Do you have an order of magnitude, Bridget, on how many people we would serve? I mean, you you've been living and breathing this for, you know, the better part of a year here, uh this piece.
Uh Council, Councilmember Valenzuela, a- as you know, when we began the plan, we um had many sites that we thought would be able to serve more. And as we've gone through the process, of course, those have been reduced. And as you know now, uh we have some sites that are serving quite a bit less than we had initially planned to serve. So um I I do want to say that I don't have an exact number of how many we would serve, as it's always changing uh based on what our availability is. Our shelters are uh are at a hundred, up to a hundred and forty-one, one sixty-three, which has been great. Um I do think the more we have sites that are able to provide multiple services beyond maybe just the respite or other uh become really essential, because we can actually serve a lot more individuals in a lot, sometimes shorter period of time. It really opens the door to county and city collaboration for all of those services. And um additionally, what's really key is a lot of the costs that we are talking about to establish some of these sites that are smaller in number. Those same operators could be be cohorts together, serving larger sites. And I think that's the other piece that we need to be talking. So larger sites allow us to serve more people and uh the ability to get people uh into services, triaged into the next steps is essential.
So, yeah, I guess, I mean, I guess if I did backup envelope math, um based on what I'm hearing tonight, I mean, we're talking maybe we could get past a thousand people in terms of new capacity, maybe.
I I think I would, I think I'd be more comfortable as we put together the the financial piece that we could publish, that we could sharpen our pencil to get a better estimate.
We can do that.
I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just making the point um that um, you know, without more sites identified, the capacity that we have as a city to address the need that we're seeing on our streets and the need, I think emphasizing the need for this partnership outside of the city limits. Because the one thing that we talk about being a pro housing city, and what does that mean? Is we've done a great job of infill. We've done a great job of developing new parcels, of getting parcels on the market. There's not a lot of space. And I think when we, I hear from constituents, I know a lot of my colleagues hear from constituents, why aren't these folks moving? And I want these folks away. But there simply isn't enough space in the city. Like, we should move forward and we are moving forward with the sites that you've identified. And I'm glad we're doing that and I'm looking forward to getting more info and continuing that work. But I guess I just want to put this in context for the folks watching this now or later, that like, we are nowhere near meeting the capacity within the city. And we're going to need state and and county help if we're going to identify enough space for us to be able to grow and fund um these programs to scale that's needed um within the city. So I guess I had an objective to my question that I should have named upfront, but I was curious.
Just to follow up with that, Councilmember Valenzuela, so are we thinking that our annual budget for our unsheltered and an ongoing budget would be about approximately, as of right now, thirty-three million dollars annually, which would provide services for roughly about a thousand?
No, don't jump to that conclusion. Howard said that we have to put a sharper pencil to this. By the way, the number of people that can be accommodated at one time is not the number, because you want to move people out of some of these temporary settings into longer-term settings, which allows you to multiply the number of people that you can help. So it's too early to make that conclusion. It's probably in between everything we're doing. Let's not forget. It's what LaShaw said, it's the Home Key projects. It's the leasing of the motels that is built into this, which I know is temporary, but is it is shelter and the beginning of the pathway for a lot of women, most women and children mostly. Um it it's about um the Fifth Street shelters, about all the things we're doing. We are into the thousands here in terms of the numbers of people that we're helping in. And Lisa Bates reports, and and people have a hard time believing this. But over the last five years, the city and county together have gotten over fourteen thousand people from an unsheltered status to permanent housing. That's what she reports. So it it's, I I agree with Councilmember Valenzuela. When when I step back and I, believe me, I have my frustrations and Howard hears them and the whole team hears them. This city is doing a tremendous job here in making um a Herculean effort. But it is not enough, and we cannot do it alone, and we cannot sustain it alone. So everybody who's got initiatives on the street and all the people who are, you know, want to make a difference and appreciate the good, you know, the desire to do so. Study the problem. Study what it's going to take for the city and the county together to be able to actually show the people of Sacramento a demonstrable uh difference on the streets. Because this city has stepped up with money. It has stepped up with opening sites. And again, it ain't perfect, and I I'm, I I get frustrated with the pace and, you know, you hear it. I I don't like all of it. But in the main, we are um laying a foundation here and we are doing a lot. And now it's time that we join forces with others to help us um get into the higher thousands as opposed to the lower thousands. That's the opportunity here. Anyone has a better idea? Of course, we're always open to it. Let's hear from the public. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have signed up?
I have five callers signed up to speak. The first one is a phone, for none is a phone number, four-three-six-six. Mr. Davis?
Oh, yes. Uh, well, I'm always happy to talk to the mayor. Uh, I wanted to say that based upon what I've heard and seen, the gesture by the mayor, you know, he's going to be remembered as trying to help the poor and the needy and downtrodden. That's scriptural. That, I mean, he can, he can ride off into the sunset no matter which way it goes, because his effort is there. However, I'm going to put him over here, and as a native, I've ridden around Sacramento. I've grown up here and I've ridden around Sacramento uh doing what I do, which goes all over the city, what I do. And what I've seen is and heard tonight is that there's a lot of emphasis on contracts. And I think that takes away from the people being put in these beds. I personally would like to see an audit of all of the people who get contracts in this comprehensive siding. The reason I say that is because I drove over to Natomas after reading that almost thirty million dollars was spent on a hotel for women and children. And I said, let me ride over and see what could have, what could thirty million dollars do in one building. It doesn't matter how tall, how big, whatever. It's one building. It's a hotel. And so as a person who runs a business, I say, well, how many people are going to be in that hotel? No matter what's being spent there, how many bodies are going to be in there? And then if you look at District Two, which has a lot of homeless sites and in controversy, you wonder, would that kind of money be spent better?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daruv Shah.
Uh, yes, uh, hi, Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to uh thank uh everybody, uh including Bridget Dean, uh Danielle Foster, uh Nick, uh who we all work with, we're we're partner, we're one of your partner hotels uh on Del Castle and Stockton Boulevard. Um I think that they're doing an amazing job and uh we would love to continue to support uh their work and uh and their partnership. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but the lack of detail I heard from Bridget Dean made me speak. Uh, where are the people going to exit the shelters, the safe grounds, safe parking, that did not get temporary housing or permanent housing? Do you keep track of those people? And also, I'm here standing for the thousands of people you claim to uh gotten off the street into housing. How many are still housed? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Flavio Wezar. Flavio, will unmute? Flavier Wezar? We'll go to the next caller, Sharina Latch.
Hello, Mayor and Chair, and uh councilmembers. Thank you for obviously holding this uh meeting tonight. I know it's pretty late and I'm sure you all are pretty tired. Um you did give a good uh, you know, rep- presentation, most of you. Um my question to you, my question to you is this. If Californians are leaving California because of the mandates, um where are you guys going to get the funding for all of these projects? If there's not enough people working in this state, uh taxpayers working in the state to fund, where are you going to get the funding? You really need to focus on, obviously, job recruiting, getting people off the streets. We all know this and it's very frustrating. But with the mass mandates lifting, I think all mandates should be lifted. Therefore, encouraging people to go back to work so they can make an income to take care of themselves and that they're not dependent upon us or the state. They can be independent. Thank you for listening and I have, I hope you guys have a really good night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, um, thank you. Are there other, IDUC Councilmember Bang, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I um just wanted to make some comments and I just had a question. Um first, um I want to take this opportunity to thank Bridget, Ryan, and all of our incredible DCR staff for your hard work. I also had the opportunity to do the point and time count this year, and it was really awesome, being out in the front with staff um out in the community uh counting our unhoused folks. So just really want to thank them. Um Mayor, as you, as you mentioned, it is a Herculean task to implement our comprehensive siding plan. And um I I do want to first take this moment to thank our staff. Um also want to give a shout out to SHRA. Thank you so much just for all your great work uh in terms of overseeing the Metavee Women Navigation Center and really implementing our Home Key projects. I just wanted this opportunity to speak on the hundred-two acres, because I know that that has been on the mind of many folks in the city and among my colleagues. Um, you know, this hundred and two acre is not just for one idea, and I want to put that on record, but it's it's for multiple uses for our community. Short term and long term. Uh, for me, as someone who represents this area, it is truly an exciting opportunity. Um, that will enable us to do something great uh, for our unhoused neighbors and our youth and families in South SAC. Um, I just want to share that our team is in the process of planning a series of community workshops. In the upcoming weeks to really determine how the property will be used. Um, the dates are being finalized and um, we will be sharing those dates this upcoming month. Um, I do want to share that I understand that we need to move with a sense of urgency to to meet the needs. Of our unhoused neighbors and what we see on the street, but. I'm also going to move with the speed of trust in South Sacramento because for decades. Uh, trust has been broken and it's going to be really important to make sure that we bring the community along with us. I think all of us can agree that for short term, we need to provide relief. Safe ground, safe parking is a temporary solution that will help stabilize the crisis. But it's not the, it's not the solution, right? The solution is truly permanent housing with wraparound services. Um, as I shared in my state of District Eight this weekend, when I was speaking to our residents and some of my colleagues, you know. I, you know, when I head to work and I do go to City Hall three times a week, you know, I drive through our neighborhoods. And I see encampments in our district. I see them on my way to City Hall. Um, and I also do see that parts of our city is falling really short. Um, what we could and should do to help our unhoused neighbors. Um, I will not accept that this is the best that we can do and none of us should. Um, and it is a moral imperative that we do everything we can. Um, and I know that this city, this county and this region can do better. Uh, I do want to mention, I think one of my biggest concern, um. While Bridget, I I really appreciate your work. I'm gonna give kudos to you. But one thing that is is a concern for me, you know, as I was listening to the presentation is really just a lack of involvement from the county on these sites. Um, you know, a question that I have is, you know, I like to inquire, how are we working with the county to meet this moment? Because I know that while you mentioned some sites, um, and I saw that it's, this is a city-county partnership. Uh, for me, the county, they provide the health and social services. I mean, that is what they do. And this plan, while we're going to move forward because it is a moral imperative. And we're not going to point fingers and the city's going to step up to meet this moment. It is absolutely unsustainable, unsustainable if the county does not do their part. In providing behavioral health, social service. And so my question to you, Bridget, is of all the sites that were listed. What percentage of current site has county involvement?
So currently, our operators are providing the resources and wraparound services at our sites that we are contracting with. And uh, we are meeting and discussing with the county on where we can meet and support each other. But currently, those contractors are providing those resources.
Um, Councilmember Bang?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to also point out in terms of all of the home key projects that are located within the city, La Mancha. Uh, Vista No Velo and the central studios at Sacramento. The county contributed to every single one of those in terms of MHSA funding. So those are parts of the gaps to help us uh, make those projects go.
Okay, so in terms of the home key project, they've contributed and there's been conversation. I know Howard, I know you've been working really hard with. Our new uh, CEO on the county end on on this partnership. But I just want to flag that because that is a huge concern for me. Um, as we move forward, Bridget, I really appreciate your sharing that, you know, it is our contractors that are providing the services. But I still believe as someone who is a constituent of the county, as someone who is a resident here, that it is. It is a moral responsibility to ensure that the county also steps up and meet this moment. This is un- like, un- unsustainable. Um, Mayor, I know that you are good at looking for funding. Um, you can get the money. I know you care deeply about this issue. You've been at this for a really long time. Um, but I know that you're only here for two years, Mayor, right? And you're going to keep hustling.
Yeah, how do you know that?
Well, if you run again, you run again. But if you don't, what I'm saying is that you're only here for two years. And city staff has to be the ones, we're implementing right now and we also have to look at what we can do short term and long term. Um, and there needs to be long term solution. We need the county to be part of this. So. I just also want to call out, you know, if you're watching this council meeting, we need folks to organize. We need you to call your board supervisor. As you saw tonight, the city is doing so much. We are putting up the funding. We are putting up our city staff resources. To do this, to meet this moment, but we need our county partners to be part of this. Uh, the other piece I want to share is, I want to take this moment to acknowledge Councilwoman Valenzuela. You know, she has been at the forefront and I would say. The forefront of all of us, all of my colleagues, leading this work in her district. Um, she has been hustling in D four to set up safe ground, safe parking, to do the short term relief, to to meet the moment. Um, and I also want to share that, you know, District Eight, we're going to do our part. Because it's simply not enough. We know that we have to keep hustling. You know, we're going to step up to meet the moment. From the Medevy Navigation Center to the La Mancha key uh, Home Key Project. To now, I'm going to be in meetings this week with our communities to co-create a good neighbor policy to ensure that we can implement. A safe parking, a a short term relief, but that in itself is not enough. And I also want to share that while we are implementing this comprehensive siding plan and some of the sites have been eliminated. That shouldn't put other of my colleagues off the hook. Because it can't just be in specific districts, like everyone needs to step up and meet this moment. Every district and every county supervisor, or you'll have two council members hustling to put. Uh, our unhoused neighbors to make sure that we have wraparound services and that's just not sustainable. And I want to say, Mayor, and if folks are watching this, it's time for all of us to organize. If you are watching this. Y'all need to call the county supervisor. We got to get the region involved, um, because the city alone can't do this. And my last comment is, I just want to say thank you to staff. I know oftentimes when we think about city services, this isn't in the lane of what the city does. But we're not going to be pointing fingers. We're going to step up to meet this moment. And I want to thank everyone, all the city staff that's working really hard day in and day night. Um, to ensure that we do everything we can. Because fifty years from now, a hundred years from now, folks are going to look at the city. They're going to look at us and ask us, what did we do in this moment? To help our unhoused neighbors? Did we sit around? Did we point fingers? But how, what did we do? And they're going to look back and said, city did step up. Right? Certain electives did step up to meet this moment and we want to make sure that we're on the right side of history. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Maya. Thank you so much.
My hand is up.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, Maya, I appreciate what you said. There's a lot that is is absolutely correct. Look. Without the appropriate services. All of our, all of our installations are going to be less effective and less useful. If you just look at the numbers that were presented in in the presentation, twenty-seven thousand needles picked up by forensic clean. What does that tell you? That tells you clearly that drug addiction is a huge problem on our streets. And yes, permanent supportive housing and wraparound services is the goal, but the fact of the matter is that many people need. Almost ten intermediary steps to be successful in permanent supportive housing. There's a lot of work to do here and we are not the provider of behavioral health services. So what Mai said about. Talking to the county is correct. Uh, you know, I know that a couple of our supervisors understand the need for a collaborative approach here, but there's another thing I want to point out. We are doing a lot of good work here and we've had plenty of successes. It just doesn't show on the street because the numbers are extreme. Um. What what we really need to do is get economies of scale. If we spend two million dollars a year on coal fax to babysit thirty vehicles. That's six sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars per vehicle. In a year's time. That is not going to get us where we need to go. You know, we really have to focus down. On economies of scale. Bridget has talked about hubs, service hubs. Certainly, uh, you know what? The city manager alluded to and the Hundred Acres and uh, the North Site. Th- that's really where we need to focus. But, you know, look, I'm sure you're all aware that there is a potential ballot initiative coming. That will force the hand of the city and the county. I think this is a good thing because it's going to make us really wake up and and um. Face the reality before us. We have an enormous behavioral health problem here. And just citing is not going to get it. Just housing is not going to get it. We're not going to get where we need to go unless we get a lot of behavioral health services and the key to that is clearly the county. So I, you know, I honestly think that we are doing good work and we're on the right track. But as Mai said, we can't do this alone. And that, thank you for your call, Mai, to have people get active about this. If we're really going to get on top of this pro- problem. Uh, we we have to work with the county. But there is another piece too, that in the interim, there is an enforcement piece of this that we cannot ignore. You know, there's a lot of crime out there. It's mostly drug fueled. And we have to be very mindful of that as we move forward. We cannot wait until we have a space for everybody. Before we enforce for the safety of our house constituents and our unhoused constituents. Because we all know, if you've talked to any of the homeless people in your district, you know how badly they've been victimized by crime. As well as the people in houses and the the impacts to businesses. It has to be a comprehensive approach. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just got to say one last thing about the county because um. Uh. Because I want to. Um, Councilmember Bang, um. I I really appreciate your passion and sometimes being relatively new. And you're not that new, but you know, relatively new, um. The fresh perspective in terms of seeing the big picture is really, really important. Um, but I want to say, and there's no but to that, I just want to say, and. Um, four years ago, when I was new, or five years ago, when I was new. I had a uh, pretty public disagreement with the county about um. Mental Health Services Act funding and wanting uh, to use those reserves and that, the excess that they had for in collaboration with. The city to address this problem. And um, it was. I don't know what it was. Um, I'm aggressive, just like you're aggressive and I just want to see the result. I've come to a place now where um, I know now more than ever, we desperately need each other. And we need the county. And we need that partnership. And we need to build the relationships with the members who. Um, at least a number of them are motivated to try to create a new day here. And that's why the downtown hub uh, opportunity is so important to show that we can be together, work together on a big. On a big project. That's why how we respond to this ballot initiative to ensure that it is countywide. Or at least a collaboration between the county and city and not just a city initiative is vitally important. And so um, everybody plays their role here and you are playing a a very important role. For me now, having gone through the fights. I want to do everything I can to build that partnership with uh, those members and with that, with that body because. You, the bottom line conclusion is correct. If we don't have their active engagement and partnership in this, we cannot sustain any of this on our own. And we all get the you-know-what beaten out of us uh, by our constituents for not doing more. Certainly, I'm. Uh, probably at the top of that list, but I look at this record. And I look at what we're seeding and what we're doing, mostly on our own. And I see potential. I see a will. Uh, but I also see the desperate need for that partnership and let's go make it happen with them. So that they are heroes and heroines in the end and and. We're doing our part for our constituents, more than our part for our constituents as well. We can only move forward and uh, that's exactly what we're doing together. So I appreciate your call to action. It is about action.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I I thank you so much and Councilmember Bang, I couldn't agree with you more. And also, uh, you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um. Yes, I do agree that the partnership definitely has to exist. But I think beyond county. If we're really truly thinking about affordable housing and finding housing for our unsheltered. We have to also approach our legislative at state. Because there's a lot of red tape. That does not allow uh, the affordable housing developers to build as fast as market rate housing. Uh, I'll give you a perfect example. In my district. I have a project that has started in two thousand and seventeen. For seventy-five units. To this day. We're still waiting for them to get some information or thumbs up from the state. So as much as I agree with you, we should rally up, we should unify and. Talk to our um, county representatives. But also, we got to make sure we have those conversations with our legislative and our governor at state level. Because giving money is one part of it. But if we're going to delay these projects for four years, we're always going to be sitting behind the eight ball. And to, you know, some of the people out there that constantly fight and bark about affordable housing. It has nothing to do with the city. The city can, does not control that vehicle. It's all about state and 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 the, and federal. And I hope that we can kind of send a message to them that we desperately need their help. To open up some of these red tapes so we can build. I read an article and I'm pretty sure all you guys know this, during the start of COVID. Uh, the city of Wuhan in China, they built four thousand units in ninety days. Uh, that's a lot of, and these are single apartments, right? Uh, whether they're studios or single room, four thousand units in ninety days. So that's something that I think we should put in front of our um, state legislative and our governor and even at. At federal level, so they can allow us to make moves like that too, so we can get ahead of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the last item of the evening. And that is the um. A res- a proposed resolution establishing weather criteria for opening seasonal respite centers. Um. Go ahead. Who's presenting on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council and staff. Um. So uh, this resolution, uh, I'll give you a little bit of background on it. Uh, one year ago, uh, in January, at the end of January, January twenty-seventh. It was an emergency council meeting that was held in the aftermath of a major storm in the city. Uh, key to that was a declaration that was made by the council. Take all action necessary to address a local emergency and imminent health. And safety threats to the unhoused population during significant weather events. In that resolution, it was also determined that we would, regardless of Sacramento County Emergency Services requirements. For temperature and weather events, we would open warming centers at that time and then ultimately cooling centers during the summer. As a result, city staff was able to open multiple warming centers, including a downtown library, city parking garage, city hall. Community centers and even a church utilizing a combination of city staff and resources. As well as private donations, community volunteers and county resources. All told, we had about seventy days when we had either warming, cooling, or in some cases, air quality uh. Uh, shelter centers open throughout the city in twenty twenty-one. On March ninth, twenty twenty-one, in recognition of the strain that was putting on city resources. The city council directed the city manager to adopt a policy. That overnight respite would be provided year round. In triage centers regardless of weather conditions and dispersed throughout the city. And that was resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five eight. And specifically, the council directed the city manager to aggressively pursue. A network of walk-in triage centers and underutilized public. Private enclosed spaces and safe parking lots throughout the city where people currently experiencing homelessness. And are living outdoors could get shelter or respite. Um, in response, city staff identified several prospects. The one that that was the best. Uh, was a respite center site in a city-owned location. At the Science and Space Center Museum at thirty-six fifteen Auburn Boulevard. Uh, for those of you that are not familiar with this, that was covered in the last discussion about the. Comprehensive siding plan and it's located adjacent to Del Pass Regional Park up in the north area of the city. Uh, the facility was set up to be a respite. It's currently available. It's configured and ready for operation with a contract. To operate the site that was approved by this council on January fourth. However. Um, as we went to open it, we received guidance. That included that it should be open primarily in the winter. And that it may only be open for a limited about ninety days period of time. So those parameters conflict with the uh, resolution that you did previously on respite centers. So in consideration of that, what we have before you today is a resolution. So in consideration of that, what we have before you today is a resolution. That will effectively set severe weather criteria for the city. It respects the fact that the city had said that we would not go by. The city emergency uh services criteria, which had. Uh, freezing temperatures below thirty-two degrees for three days or above hundred and five degrees in the summer. And it creates these, let me share my screen real quick. If everybody can see that. It creates these new opening thresholds. Nighttime lows of thirty-seven degrees or lower.
Your screen isn't showing.
Your green, your screen isn't showing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get that back on. Here we go. Seeing it now?
There you go.
Thank you so much. So. These would be the opening thresholds now for city respite centers. Nighttime lows of thirty-seven degrees or lower for two or more days. In a five-day span, rain for two or more consecutive days. One day or night of rain combined with lows of thirty-two degrees. In hot weather, it would be based on publication of a National Weather Service Heat Advisory. You can see some of the criteria. Basically, it's a hundred degrees or higher for at least two days and nighttime temperatures. That don't go below seventy-five. Now. This does align, we looked around at government municipalities. And uh and tried to see what they were using. Not a lot of them had good heat criteria. But um, we did see that the county recently published. A change to uh their criteria. And this closely matches that. Now, this is not their emergency services criteria. This is what their Department of Human Assistance uses. So they have the same criteria for the. The cold weather, thirty-seven degrees or lower, rain for two or more consecutive days. One or more uh, one day or night. With lows of thirty-two with rain. Their warm weather response was a little bit squishy, so we tightened ours up. Uh, they're using a National Weather Service uh criteria of high. That really didn't coincide with any criteria that we could find, so we're using. Their National Weather Service Advisory of a hundred degrees or higher, a little bit easier for us to use. Um, for a feel for what that looks like. Sacramento averages twenty-three days a year at weather of over a hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Uh, between May and October. And we get about forty-six days a year below forty, so you'd be a little bit less than that for thirty-seven and below. And you can see the. The chart there that identifies what those hot periods and cold periods look like. And that's November to April that we primarily get those cold days. These are the respite centers, um, the ones that the city staff identified that are. Ideal respite centers are three six fifteen Auburn, as we talked about. About fifty-plus capacity there. Uh, that's staffed by Hope Cooperative and services would be provided. We talked in the last discussion about how important that is. And that was the intent of the triage centers in your original resolution. The downtown service hub. Still ascertaining how many that would that would allow, but at least a hundred plus capacity. Staffed by city and county as well as contractors with full services there. Temporary respite centers that we have been using and could still be available. Uh, new city hall lobby that has about an eighty-plus capacity. There's limited hours, it does conflict with public meetings, so we are not quite as able to use that. As some other facilities, especially when our meetings go back to public. And then the community centers, Haganwood, Fennel, George Sims. South Potomac, the new North Potomac Community Center, Oak Park, Coloma and Hart Senior Center. The capacity and participation are different based upon where they are. Um, you know, Haganwood has been used the most, but we we kind of get less people in there. Uh, it does impact normally scheduling programming, so a lot of the programming as we're starting to open these. Would probably be limited or or canceled on days when they are being used as a respite center. And uh, we really don't do services there because they're manned by, all these are manned by city staff. So, um. Bottom line on this uh council is that we're looking for your guidance. Um, we have uh taken this about as far as city staff can. Um. Given that we are doing this out of hide. We have tried to open the respite centers as you gave our direction for twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. But um, we have not been able to do that. So we're asking for your help. If you could, so that we could get a temperature threshold. And then we have better criteria and we know when we can open these respites. Or if you don't want to do that, go back to the original idea of opening them year round.
Okay, Chris, let me, Howard.
Can Chris put up that one slide just real quick and I'll and I'll let you go.
Yeah.
Which one would you like up, Howard?
The the one with all the respite centers with the city staff and the other. As he's doing that, really, uh, what we're talking about here is a kind of a system of respite locations. And what we're asking for and is a a temperature criteria, which is different than what the council had approved way back. And that is because it is uh very problematic for us to staff these locations. Just because of the uncertainty. And the temperature thresholds that they were recommending, we tried to align them with where the county was at. And working with our uh with Daniel Bowers and the Offices of Emergency Management. Uh, those are recommendations here and I'm happy to get feedback from this council about what uh. What that might look like. It's different that this council might want to see, you know, a temperature below or below and. Uh, but really, it is, it is really going to be helpful for us to have some certainty. In order to staff these locations on a very predictable basis, not only for our staff, but for our community. So that's the helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Assistant City Manager for the presentation. I I want to lay out an idea here, um. And and I think it is difficult to legislate from the bench, so to speak, right, to fiddle around with what the criteria should be. And the staff has put out an idea. In my view, fundamentally, the city council. In March of twenty twenty-one said, we want you to endeavor, we didn't expect. All to be done right away or or even completely given the magnitude of the problem. We want you to open twenty-four seven year-round respite centers. That's what we wanted you to do. And it didn't happen. We had one opportunity and it was this science center. And because of the delay. Uh, and the back and forth on uh opening up this science center, we missed the winter. Which would have been the opportunity to show the. The advantages of not doing it. Based on temperature and and just keeping it open for ninety days through the winter. Deciding then whether or not it was good. Not so good, the impact on the neighborhoods, whatever adjustments need to be made, and then to go forward from there. And that didn't happen. So now you come forward full circle and say, well. We didn't implement your last resolution. And so we want to go back to temperature criteria. And then there's an added factor here. That the city manager has been working really, really hard on all of this. Has had a lot of conversations with a number of different parties, including two members of the Board of Supervisors. And they're the ones who are comfortable with the temperature criteria, at least so far as it. Um, it it impacts the science center. And I believe that when our city manager makes a deal, so to speak. With the county that we should live up to that. Because we're obviously, as you heard in the last discussion. We're trying to build. A stronger partnership with the county. And if that was what was promised, even though I don't agree with it. I think that we should follow through on that, but that doesn't mean the entire ordinance, uh, March ordinance needs to be rescinded. Why don't we do a resolution? That applies these temperature criteria to the science center. And then workshop or look a little bit more about whether or not temperature criteria for their other sites. Is appropriate or not appropriate. Um, and continue to strive as the current resolution says. That is what the council directed. To try to find, you know, with the downtown hub, for example. Why all of a sudden would you jump to the conclusion when we, when we may spend a lot of money on that? That that should only be a a a temperature-based respite center. Maybe that should be a twenty-four seven respite center, but I think we probably need more time. To really debate that. So what I would ask tonight. My colleagues is to approve the temperature criteria for the science center. But to not rescind the the March twenty twenty-one ordinance. And to allow uh and to allow some more time for us to think about and consider. What we want to do together as we open up these new sites. By the way, the criteria themselves. As applied to the science center. In citywide, you know, at first I kind of said thirty-seven degrees, or what if it's thirty-eight degrees and windy? That's why I don't like temperature criteria, but in fairness. We did a little bit of homework. Between October first, twenty twenty-one and March one, twenty twenty-two, we opened respite centers thirteen nights. That's my, that's my. Homework here. If these criteria had been in place, we would have opened fifty-nine nights. So. You know, I think it's a good first stab, but. I'd like the council to be able to to consider the temperature criteria issue or the twenty-four seven. Not based on one project here and one agreement with. The council member, and I know Sean can speak for himself. And the two county supervisors, let's live up to that agreement with the community. But let's hold off on rescinding the. The uh, the broader ordinance that has never been, never been implemented. That's my suggestion. But let's hear from the public and then we'll uh debate it.
So Mayor, I have nine speakers signed up to speak. The first is Lily Zhu.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Steinberg and city council members for this opportunity to speak. My name is Lily and I'm a resident of District One. I'm a medical student at California North State University and I'm a code advocacy chair for our chapter of Sacramento Street Medicine. Um, I wanted to take this time to voice my strong opposition to item twenty-one and the establishment of weather. Activation criteria for opening respite centers. So as you've mentioned in January twenty twenty-one, the city council promised to keep the respite centers. Open regardless of weather criteria. And according to the Sacramento B analysis, nearly two hundred of our unhoused residents died in twenty twenty-one. And therefore introducing arbitrarily determined weather criteria to these. Respite centers will ensure more deaths of our vulnerable neighbors in twenty twenty-two. It's not a question of if, rather a question of how many. People can still die in thirty-eight degree weather or ninety-nine degree weather, even if it's just for one night. Furthermore, to reiterate what has previously been said and also what Bethany Harmon said in her e-comment. We need to demonstrate to the unhoused community that we care about them year round, not just under arbitrary conditions. The weather activation criteria is unreasonable and dangerous, and I urge you to vote no and to consider humane solutions to this crisis. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope you can take this rationale into consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rose Cabral.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rose from District Six. So, um. I think we all know why we're having this conversation. Um, I mean. Why we had this conversation last year, we had numerous neighbors die outside, so. There was an emergency and we acted in accordance of the emergency and made this plan. And while it hasn't. Played out as well as it could have, I think the mayor, did you just say that there were, they were only open thirteen nights and they should have been fifty-nine nights? I might have.
No, I said, I said thirteen nights, I said these criteria, which I don't love. Would have resulted in them being open for fifty-nine nights. That's what I said.
Instead of the thirteen that they were open.
Yeah, so.
Right, so, well, okay, so I think we we definitely, they should have been open more and we could, we need to ask ourselves why they weren't open more and we need to get them open more. I don't. I don't really understand why the science center would need different criteria. I think that. People need respite, right? A short period of rest or relief from something difficult or unpleasant. We know that with. Global warming, we're gonna continue to see these unpredictable weather events, so maybe this won't even be a topic in a few years because the weather. Will be horrible all the time. Um, but. I think we need, if we have it year round, we can better plan, right? And we don't have the city making an announcement on Friday at five o'clock to see if the shelter is gonna be open. We have the shelter open all the time and people can plan and they can know where to go to be safe. I would like to reiterate what Councilmember Vang said earlier. We need all the districts to step out up in order to make this. Um, a network that really does care about our unhoused community and the county, of course, as well. Um, to create the system that will accommodate people at every stage of their journey so that we can get them. Into housing. And take care of them where they're at. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joe Smith.
Good evening, everybody. This is Joe Smith, the advocacy director for Sacramento Loaves and Fishes, and. I just wanted to to reflect back, um, weather-based criteria last January. Is why the respite center didn't open and people died that night. Weather-based criteria got people killed. And. I really want to applaud what was done on March night with the resolution. I know that. Doing away with the weather criteria was a big deal, but I think what was an even bigger deal was was mandating. Twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week respite centers that offer triage services. And as as we've all talked about already, um, it's been a year and that didn't happen at all. Uh, we wouldn't have to worry about how many times the centers could have been open if we used the respite criteria. If we just had the centers open like was decided on March night. You know, Councilmember Harris had some concerns back on March ninth. I ran I ran back through the tape today. And. After finding out that it was gonna be twenty-four-hour triage, he was actually quite excited. He did, however, say that he he wanted to be sure that city staff wasn't gonna be used to staff these centers. And that they would be under the purview of Bridget Dean. So if you went to a weather-based criteria and you open temporary centers, that would be city staff, that would, that would really just, the whole thing is not going along with the ordinance you passed March ninth. And Mayor, you said then on March ninth that uh. This resolution, resolution fifty-eight. Uh, offered continuity with the master sighting plan. I'd also like to go back to. Item nineteen tonight, which was the coordinated access system. If we had twenty-four seven triage respite centers open. That could be incorporated into that system and be an even bigger front door for our folks to get the services they need. So. Please do not go back to weather-based criteria. It ended up getting people killed last year. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to jump in just for a second here. Uh, I appreciate Joe Smith and his comments and. In fact, the county exec and I met with him last week and we had a discussion about. Opportunities for us to partner with Loaves and Fishes to make their facilities available as respite. Uh, he was amenable to it and he was going to discuss it with his board and his leadership. But I just feel like if if we're, if we're gonna find locations, which we've not been able to do. I think Loaves and Fishes and other partners in the community have to be part of the solution. And in fact, uh, the county exec and I have committed to funding. The respite at Loaves and Fishes, provided their leadership is agreeable to it. So I think that this is a conversation that's coming. And I I understand the frustration, uh, and if we go back to a non. Uh, weather-triggered respite centers. Uh, I think that's fine as long as we have um partnerships and locations to do so. And up to this point, we've not been able to. So I I just wanted to put that out there because we just had this conversation with Joe and he's part of the solution. So.
I think that's great. I think we do, we do need more space. I mean, that's the fundamental problem here. We don't have enough. Space throughout the community, so I appreciate you mentioning that. Let's go back to the public testimony.
Our next speaker is PJ.
Yeah, per the item twenty-one proposal, um, I would ask you to decline it. I can't say I'm shocked. We've seen the county fail time and time again on respite centers were needed due to weather events. They would rarely open them. They would only open them in the most extreme circumstances and they wouldn't follow the most basis, basic prescriptions from doctors. Surrounding what does and doesn't make a potentially health-damaging weather event. We saw similar from you. You would have had to be berated or lit up on social media or the local news before you would act, actually act to address weather events. You wouldn't act proactively. You wouldn't act if it was meant, wasn't mentioned unless there was an eye on what you were doing. Why should I expect that you'll do any different? From the way the county plan was set up and the way you've subsequently shown your inability to respond and the complete lack of comprehensive solutions over the past year. What do epidemiologists did you consult in making these temperature determinations? We know from doctors that long periods at higher temperatures than freezing can cause damage to people living in it constantly. We know from doctors that long periods of lower temperatures than a hundred degrees can cause damage to people living in it constantly. We know that both of these things are changed depending on the presence of water. During the water, winter, the presence of water creates. The presence of water creates situations where sickness occurs much more easily at higher temperatures. The lack of water during the summer creates health events surrounding dehydration. There are myriad of factors to consider, and having a respite center open year round helps to assuage the community's notion. That you're going to honestly address this issue rather than having some bureaucrat ticking boxes until a certain threshold is reached. And humans on the street can be actually cared for. You just talked about a comprehensive way to access services around the city and county and having the county buy in. What better way to access services than out of a respite centers that are constantly there? And that unhoused residents know is a resource for them to be able to access services. This is backtracking on the promise, and we've seen the way you've responded over the past year to weather events. No one trusts you will do the right thing. The only right thing to do is to keep your promise regarding year round respite centers open twenty four seven, multiple centers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
I'm gonna have to agree with all the people uh spoke before me on this issue. And even the city manager, as much as I hate doing it. Because uh, we have several really cold nights in last month. They were below freezing and I don't think they were open hardly any of the time. And we also had a record breaking rainstorm. We should have a. We should have a respite center open twenty four seven. And we should find even more spots that will have a twenty four seven respite center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Cory Copeland.
Hi, yeah, I'm Cory Copeland, no relation to Robert who just spoke. Uh, I've been a resident of D four for about two years. Um, I wish I was calling to sell cheesecake, but I'm calling because I've watched the city fail to make progress on respite centers since I've been in Sacramento. I was at an aid distribution event a little over a week ago. At the event, I talked to a woman who told me about her struggle the week before in Sacramento's classic late February unseasonably seasonable winter weather. As I was talking to her while she tried on various two small donated jackets, she described to me how cold she was over the last week. Bone cold and how she couldn't get warm. Her experience is common. People are struggling and sometimes dying. Look, I'm a bureaucrat. I can respect the bureaucratic hustle. I really can. The coordinated access system you all discussed in item nineteen, that's great. But there can also be a banal violence to the way we bureaucratically address these issues. Respite centers done by temperature thresholds are a case in point. No one knows when they'll open. We use unpredictable temperature and weather cutoffs. Then they're always announced at the last minute in a scramble. The result is that people die. We need serious long term twenty four seven respite centers between the wet season, winter, uh, the ever lengthening wildfire smoke season, the brutal summers. There really is not a time that people don't need these. Our most vulnerable neighbors are suffering. I heard and agree with what the council members were saying in so many words that we kind of have a deadbeat county on these issues. And they're right. So maybe we shouldn't be taking their guidance on this issue and implement the plan that the council had. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Flavio Wezar.
Hi, how you doing today? Uh, my name is Flavio Wezar, longtime advocate, community activist. Uh, recently, uh, was elected to the, you know, to help out within the. The low rider community. And my issue I guess that I want to bring up is why are we putting, um, you know, homeless people at Miller Park? You know, um, this is a very cold place. And, you know, when we start speaking about this, we're talking about putting people in an area where it's extremely cold. And people are going to get sick and, you know, they're, you know, we have to find a better place for these people. I mean, think about it. It's extremely cold there. We go outside right now, it's cold, but by water, it's even colder. And so first of all, I want to stop by saying that the low rider community is not against the homeless. Actually, we want to help the homeless and we want to work with the homeless. As we're working with some of you now, and but the issue that is coming up is, uh, you know, there's there's some issues. I mean, think about it. The Latin community has been using this park for over forty years. And now all of a sudden you have a whole group, thousands of people, thousands of people who now have been displaced from being able to go to the park. And being able to go take their families and being able to go there and barbecue and do the things that they do normally. And now they're disposed. And so let us find, uh, you know, a better way. Let's work together. Let's, you know, let's work together to find place, you know, for them to be. Where they won't freeze to death, where they won't be out there by the water, you know, so let's let's work on that, you know. I I I think each one of you, you know, each one of you are advocating in different ways uh in our community, you know, and helping out. You know, I know each one of you, you know, we worked on different issues, you know, and I am now, you know, helping. You know, on the commission, the Low Rider Sacramento Low Rider Commission, and and these issues are are big issues in our community and. We need your help, you know, to be able to address these issues that are ever before us. And so please help us and work with us. And we thank you for this time. You guys have a good evening and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Anthony M.
How's it going, guys? Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Anthony. Um, I'm a family medicine and street medicine provider as well as I serve as executive director of Sacramento Street Medicine. Um, you know, I just want to express my strong opposition to item twenty one. I. I can speak from personal experience as a provider for, you know, taking care of these folks. Uh, specifically for some of those that have passed as a result of these, you know, weather based ordinances. Um, from a medical perspective, as as one of the speakers alluded to earlier. You know, individuals can die from hypothermia or hyperthermia. And as little as one hour. So to think to have this weather based ordinance uh at these extreme temperatures. For two days uh before they even think about opening a respite. Uh, will result in individuals dying. That's that's uh without question. Um, you know, my teams uh care for these folks. They love these folks. And, uh, you know, Councilmember. Vang talked about meeting the moment. And that goes in direct opposition to things like this. And so. You know, I asked the council to truly meet this moment and oppose item twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Richard Wake.
Yeah, hello, Richard Wake, City Council, District Seven. Um, I gotta agree with everything that Joe Smith said. I just tuned into this a little bit late, but you know, setting any type of tension temperature criteria is not a good idea. But one of the main points I want to make here is. You know, it was mentioned, a lot of people are dying in the streets. But, you know, you guys are are sweeping out vehicles, motor homes and trailers. From people out in Commerce Circle and out on Evergreen Street and are leaving more people out in the cold and forcing them into their neighborhoods. You know, it's really rather frustrating because a lot of the people I'm working with here in Southland Park. Which includes many businesses, apartment complexes and residents. That are fairly new to City Council District Seven and were in five before. We're in favor of safe ground parking and camping and opening things up. We but what we are not in favor of is people continuing to say no, not in my neighborhood. Like the gentleman from the low rider community that was talking about Miller Park. Most of these people are offering no practical solutions to anything. They just keep saying no, 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 no. And that's wrong. The time for debate is over. It's time to get people sheltered and it's time to get more of these warming centers and spots open. You know, it doesn't matter if the temperature is thirty four, thirty five, thirty six degrees or whatever. And what about when the fires come and smoke starts pouring into the valley again? We have to take those things into consideration too. And, you know, it just isn't fair that other neighborhoods are being forced to suffer from everybody else saying no while we want to help people. That's wrong. We're going to be telling that to Councilmember Jennings with the meeting we have him have with him on this coming Saturday and even a little bit more forcefully so. So, you know, let's get these places open. Let's quit these sweeps. And if people want solutions that that's great, but start coming up with with practicalities. The time for debate is over. It's time to get people sheltered. Way beyond time. You guys have had more than five years. I'm sick and tired of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Thank you very much, Madam. Let's turn it to the City Council. Councilmember Shinir.
Thanks, Mayor. Um. Couple things and and I want to go ahead and and move this, but I have one thought that I want to. I know you've been working on it uh with the city manager and there's been a lot of discussion with um. Our colleagues at the council and at the board of supervisors, so I want to respect that as well. Um, but, you know, and and this is all very complicated as we've seen tonight. Uh, I think our staff has done a great job. And Katie, I think it's a good idea to put it all on one spreadsheet. If we can fit it in, it's going to be pretty massive. But it it really will let us look at the bottom lines and we and we don't have unlimited funds, unfortunately. So we have to be smart about how we can do this and. Um, it's a balancing act and we have to make decisions about respite twenty four seven versus more affordable housing versus more shelters. All of that. And that's, I mean, I understand that's our job. But we can't do it all. Um, and we certainly can't do it all by ourselves. So I I also very much appreciate the. The conversation with Loews and Fishes about collaborating as we go forward. I think that's really important. So what I'd like to do is uh move the mayor's. Um, suggestion. But also, um, and and Mayor, I'd love your comments on this, but add some authority. Delegate some additional authority to the city manager. Uh, if he sees fit for extenuating circumstances, if there's a fire and it's smoke, whatever it is, and I would hope that. The county can do the same thing with the county exec. Where you don't have to come back to us. Um, keep the keep the temperature guidelines, but use those as a minimum.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're talking my my idea is just for the Science Center.
Yeah, yeah, even just for the Science Center, right? Yeah. So no, I'm moving your item, but trying to add in that one particular instance. A little bit of a dish delegate, a little additional authority if the county would do the same thing. Where if you and the county exec say we've got a fire or. Got incredibly high winds or whatever that looks like that doesn't. Exactly meet the criteria, you have the ability to open up the center and use your own judgment in that. So that that would be my motion.
And that's a that's fine with me, your your addition. So let me just summarize what you're moving is. We do not rescind the temperature criteria.
Right.
Excuse me. We do not rescind the March action rescinding the temperature criteria. That that remains in place. But we make an exception for the Science Center. To live up to the agreement that the city manager made with the supervisors. But add that for the Science Center. Um, that you can go above, if you will, extenuating circumstances and open it up even for more. Nights than the temperature criteria were allowed based upon um. Extenuating circumstances.
With with the understanding power that you need to talk to the county about this and get an agreement on it.
I I think that is a sound way to go here because again. To the public and the advocates and everybody, including the members that voted last March. To eliminate the temperature criteria, we will not have temperature criteria for the rest of the sites. The Science Center is different because there's been an understanding with the county and we want to build. I want to build that partnership with the county and I don't want to undermine that right now, right or wrong? That's what it was. So I think your motion is a sound one. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Geta. Okay. You're next, Councilman Geta.
Yeah, I think, you know, Councilmember Shinir uh gave me to the punch there. I think they. You know, figuring out how we have a a successful um respite center. Uh, and and it's only going to be successful if we have that good partnership with the county. And so I do. You know, want to thank both Supervisor Serna and Desmond, who now with redistricting that area has changed, but both of them have been hand in hand working on this. So I. We we have to show some success, particularly as as we move over to the other respite centers. You know, I know we. Tried to find one in District Six and we were able to open up a few times the Seventh Day Adventist, but. You know, we'd like to be able to make sure that if we had like, for example, as as Councilmember Shinir brought up. When we had fires, I mean, that was in. Um, in September, when something, and part of it was in July and June as well. So. Uh, and that had nothing to do with our temperature. So being able to. Get folks into safe places, I think is important. So keeping that in place while we make this one successful. And being much more cognizant of of the much needed relationship, I think is important. So I I'm just glad to. Support that concept, but I think it is a good strategy to move forward.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris, Harris and Valenzuela Deloloy.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, we have to look at where our uh respite centers have been successful and where they haven't. Obviously, when they are located in an area where there's a significant population of homeless living outdoors, they're more successful. That's why the Galleria worked, uh, the City Hall Garage, although it was damaged. Um, eh, you you know, an outlying respite centers were very costly and had two, three, four people a night. That's not an efficient use of our money. We 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 just simply, as Jay said, we have to make a lot of compromises. We have to be stewards. Of the resources we have and get the best bang for the buck. The the Science Center on Auburn Boulevard. We've already invested a hundred thousand dollars to get it conditioned and ready to use. We need to use it. I like the mayor's proposal. I think that he is exactly right in terms of working with the county. And uh. Creating a space that is ready to go. We should we should do this. But we do have to be very mindful. That, uh, you know, a lot of respite centers that we have opened. Uh, were not well utilized and and really we lost a lot of money on that. It's hard to pull staff together quickly. I think this is an interesting compromise approach. And to Joe Smith, I would say this. I appreciate that Loews and Fishes hopefully will step into a solution category instead of just. Uh, a feeding category for the homeless. I had hoped for years that Loews and Fishes would step up. And get more proactive about dealing with the the real issues confronting the homeless. And there is no place with a deeper concentration of homeless people than the River District. A respite center located at Loews could be extremely successful and could actually achieve. The goal that we're trying to do, which is safeguard the lives of the people living outdoors during extreme weather events. So I really hope, Joe, that you can convince your board. To open Loews and Fishes as a respite center and because we need it. And I think you should do it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, um. I want to get a couple of things um on the table right now because I think there's two things we're talking about. I support year round respite. I support twenty four services, but there is going to be an ongoing need for. Emergency response, for weather based response. And so I like to put. On the table, the idea of what does both. Look like because that's what we're kind of doing right now, which is why people are getting the signals from us because they're saying, well, why are you opening? City Hall when it's cold outside? I thought you were doing year round. And I think what Chris spoke to and what Howard just spoke to. Illuminates that like some buildings really don't work for you. Right? You've got community programming that's important happening there. There's other city functions, but they do work for emergencies, right? They do work when it's a hundred and five outside and we just need to get people indoors for a couple of days so that they don't suffer the brunt of. Of an extreme event. And so like I want to talk about both in terms of how we frame this because I want. Frankly, I want the Science Center to open twenty four seven. We own that building. I don't understand why we wouldn't open it twenty four seven. We've put a hundred thousand dollars of improvements into this building. I appreciate that a deal is made and I'm not going to try to go over the heads of that because I wasn't at that table, but. I think that there's there's a clear criteria we can look at here with staff is when we control a building, when we own a building. There's no reason that we shouldn't open that for twenty four seven other than we don't think there's need twenty four seven, which just isn't true. And the fact that respite isn't being used outside of the central city is not because there is a need outside of the central city, it's because it's super inconsistent. It's super inconsistent when we announce it because as was mentioned, right? We don't really have a system. We haven't budgeted for this. We're scrambling to get city staff into different spots. Sometimes we have space for. One site to open. Sometimes we can get two or three open, but it's super, super ad hoc. And as a result, people don't show up to Hagenwood every time there's a weather event because they don't know if it's going to be open. And so I think what I'd also like to come out of this conversation is. A some a report back. And so I hope that, um. My councilmember colleague who made the motion, Councilmember Shinir, would be open to an amendment. I would love for staff to come back to us. With a proposal for what it would look like to do more consistent weather based response, like what, how can we identify more consistent? Weather based response. Um, in addition to, I'm not changing the motion, I'm adding to it, Mayor. Um, it's like, I want staff to come back to us with. Which centers do we think we could open consistently during weather based event? What would it look like to adopt the criteria that Chris came out so that we're not just opening? Um, when it's below freezing, but we're doing it more frequently. What would it look like instead of two days in a row of freezing? If it was any day that there was a freezing one day when it was freezing and to kind of give us some options similar to what you did to the sighting plan of what that would take and what that would look like. Because I think my dream is that we have consistent centers identified where somebody knows. It's going to be freezing tonight or it's going to be hot or the criteria is going to be reached. So these five centers are going to open. five centers are going to open and here's where the RT bus lines are going to go to get me to and fro, if we've already started talking to RT about. And I'm going to know about it at least two days in advance, like just so we have a little bit more of a set expectation. If it's just City Hall, it's just City Hall, but at least like we can get that out there and start systematizing that level of response a little bit. Staff has done a great job doing it, but it always feels like we're all kind of scrambling a little bit the week before a thing. And so I think that I would love to add that to the motion, Councilmember Shinier, if you're, if you're open to it, because I would just like to talk about what it would look like to expand our weather-based criteria in addition to pursuing these year-round triage models so that we have more of our temporary spaces opening up more consistently.
No, I, I, I think that's fine. Look, the more information we have to operate on, the better decisions we're going to make. My only, not a concern, but I would like to have Howard come back with the timing on that, because I know they've got a lot on their plate right now.
Yeah.
So just to leave that a little bit flexible, but getting back to the count, to the council with a note of when you could do it, but I think it's important to do.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, we shouldn't let the foolish and seasonal weather right now trick us into not remembering that it is still winter. There is still going to be storms coming. There's still going to be cold nights ahead of us. And so definitely want to respect staff's capacity as to when they bring that back. But we'd just love to have that conversation because I think it would give staff more certainty as to when and where we're expecting capacity to be deployed. It would give us something we could give to RT and to our other partner agencies like Loews, like others to say, this is what you can expect. This is what we're going to do together. And I just think it would make our overall weather-based response. And again, I'm not saying I want us to go back into not doing year-round triage. I just think as, as we've noticed, we've been doing it now as we've been pursuing year-round triage, because when weather events happen, you just need to shelter people. You need to keep them safe. You need to keep them from dying on the streets the best we can. So.
Eric, you're my second. Is that, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'll concur with that. And I think that's, I think just given the flexibility, I think is important.
Yeah. So, so to make, there's like number, like where it can happen and like in terms of staff capacity, what it would look like, like the mayor just mentioned, like I think it was like 13 days versus more than 50 days if we went to Chris's criteria, what it could look like if we went to one day criteria. And then we could, we give you guidance in terms of like how we'd like to see that roll forward. But I want to respect your capacity, but also try to address some of the issues that I see as grappling with every time there's a cold night.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Laloie. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all my colleagues to be so supportive of sites in one particular district versus some of the other districts. So I appreciate everybody's concern. The Science Center, the biggest thing is that it is connected to a children recovery house. And if we have facilities that are in other districts that can be 24 hours, then we should concentrate on that or just kind of stick to the districts that we represent. Just, just something I want to share with everyone. Second of all, the, the Science Center, I've heard so many different stories. So I just want to get clarity on this. On the last call that it was myself, Howard and one of supervisors, the discussion about the Science Center that we would use that facility as an admin facility for Hope Cooperative, and then we'll activate it depending on the weather. And not only will we activate that building, but we're going to activate every community center in the city of Sacramento. I hope nobody will oppose to that, because after all, if the weather is bad, then every community center should be activated, not just Hagenwood, not just the Science Center. If we really want to step up, then I hope all my colleagues step up to say that if the weather is bad and this, our city manager identifies it as bad, then we should cancel programs in every community center and make it available as a temporary respite or, or a temporary shelter for, for the unhoused.
Well, I think Councilmember, just to make, just to make super clear, Councilmember, I think right now the last weather activation, the only respite center was open in my district, just like the, most of the sites have only been opened in my district and then Councilmember Shinier's district. And so I hope your perception that this is only going to happen in District Two isn't based on what's been happening, because most of them have been happening in my district. I want to make super clear that my criteria to the city manager.
One, one, one at a time.
The Hagenwood Center has been open quite a bit. In fact, to a point that I had to reach out to DCR and say, why is this center constantly becoming activated? And what I was told was, well, on these days, this center doesn't have activities, or they don't have as many activities as some of the other centers, therefore we're activated. So unless you're hearing something else and I'm hearing something else, I'm just stating what I'm being told by the staff. And, and again, it comes down to, you know, every district has to step up. District Two has done its share. We've had three sites that we're, we've proposed for safe parking. Our Colfax side, we're just waiting for it to get activated. So the, the idea that everybody has an opinion on this Science Center, it's somewhat discouraging, especially when you hear different stories or stuff happens behind closed doors. And myself, as a representative of this district, I'm hearing it through a third party. And with the commitment that I've made to my district, especially active from this year, is to be very transparent and enough is enough. You know, if we have a site in downtown, then let's make sure we save all our money for that site and we'll make that 24 respite, 24-hour respite center. But to keep dragging a site that, you know, we've made everybody nervous from the, the Children Recovery Center to the residents, to the supervisors, and, and hearing mixed messages is just somewhat frustrating also.
I think, Councilmember, just to say, I support, I'm supporting your recommendation to only open this during weather-based events. And I am not opposing having 24 shelter open in my district. And I look forward to you opening sites in your district that can be open for that purpose as well. To make super clear, my direction to the city manager is to look at staff capacity, to look at our buildings and to bring back criteria that we can all look at for weather-based activations events. So District Two is not being targeted in any way. And I resent any implication that the Central City District is not stepping forward for our fair share of the services.
Well, I highly recommend yourself, Councilmember.
Let, let, I'm cutting this off.
I got to finish this, Mr. Mayor. Then I recommend that some of my colleagues, when you get a chance, go ahead and drive through District Two. Go ahead and drive by Colfax, Lexington, Commerce Circle, Diesel, and then let's have that open conversation. It's gone to a point that I've reached out to Crystal Sanchez saying, let's get around the roundtable because I don't know what else we can do. I, I need you.
How about this? We are one city and this is a terrible citywide problem.
I, I just hope that we are one city, that every district gets looked at the same way.
I've got the floor.
I understand, Mayor, but when you drive around our city, it doesn't show that, that way. But I, I, I guess I'm wearing a different type of glasses.
You make, you make your point. We're one city. It's a terrible citywide problem. And yet everyone should represent their district zealously, of course. But we also need to think beyond our respective districts and figure out like we're doing tonight, how we are going to try to make a bigger dent citywide. And the end result of this motion, if it passes, will be that we will have come to a compromise on the Science Center, but for the rest of the city, the March action remains in effect. We won't have temperature criteria, but the city manager is invited to, let's take a little bit of time and think through what might be criteria that would get us farther than where we are now within our budget, and in ways that create some certainty for the community and that maximize the numbers of people that get inside as many nights as possible, because that's the goal here, off the streets, indoors. And then to partner with the county to get the services and the triage that can be done at those respite centers. The Loews and Fishes idea is a really important idea. We got to re-up our efforts with our faith-based organizations as well. What if we paid $1,000 to a congregation, to any congregation that brought in 25 people in a night, $1,000 a night? I mean, there's so many different ways that we could do this, aside from having to do it all from soup to nuts. We could offer a payment as an incentive to actually bring 25 people, 20, 29 people a night and, and pay for the, for, for what it takes to bring people. There's so many ways to do this. And the message tonight will be, Science Center is a good compromise and a good start, but we want to keep going with the county and try to get as far as we can to get as many people inside as we can. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm in support of the motion that's on the floor. I just want to add a little bit more direction to it as well. And you kind of stole my thunder in the faith-based organizations. We did a winter sanctuary in Sacramento for years where the faith-based organizations really, you know, showed up and showed out. And I think it's an opportunity to bring them back to the fold again in order to be a part of this solution as far as respite centers are concerned. And I'd be more than willing to lead that charge in finding out who would be available to do so. The, the, the other point that I want to make is, I do think there, it makes a lot of sense on a nightly basis to have respite centers in different parts of the city that are open 24/7, where people know that they are open. And I think it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be eight, nine, 10, but I think if we divide the city and you take a look at it, there's an opportunity to have them open, whether it's with community-based organizations, respite, I mean, faith-based organizations and/or other spaces that we have right now. And I just think that that would give the consistency for people who are out on the streets of knowing this is going to be open and I don't have to worry about it because it's going to be open every time. So I just think that's something we need to be looking at because people are confused right now. We're confusing them. We're open tonight, we're not open tonight. And I think if in fact we were to have something open all, all the time, it would eliminate that confusion and get more people off the street.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you so much. There is a motion and a second. Let's call, let's call it. Yes.
I need some clarity here, because there's been a lot of things being said here. So for one, the motion is that temperature-driven activations, Science Center.
Yes.
No temperature activation.
Correct, your discretion, but a, a message to continue to push to open as much respite as we can, which by the way, was the March 2020, 2021 resolution. And so that remains. And whether it's Loews and Fishes, whether it's faith-based vouchers or incentives, whether it's more sites around the city, whether it's doing what I think you've done very well, I said this to you, Mr. City Manager, using your discretion, for example, to open City Hall without temperature criteria when you have seen a storm coming, all of that. But I think the message is, you know, continue to, and make this a top, topic with the county again, just like we did at the, at the Science Center, that we want to bring more people indoors. We don't want them out every single night, you know, because the weather is subjective and there's not a big difference between 38 and 39 degrees and, and 37 degrees. None of it's perfect, but we want to, we want to, we want the city to keep trying to at least stand up more of what we intended when we passed the resolution in March of 2021.
And, and I think that to be very transparent here, that those opportunities are at City Hall, potentially Loews and Fishes, and, but to have something more permanent 24/7, it, it's a, it's a tough go right now.
The Downtown Hub, which Chris Conlin even mentioned tonight as one of his examples, I mean, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's call the role.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm really sorry. I just, I couldn't hear what Howard said as his second thing. And I was trying really hard to hear it to get clarity on what, what exactly you heard, Howard.
I think that it's going to be tough to get to 24/7. We had one opportunity at the Science Center if we had done it earlier in the winter, at least for 90 days. But now that, there's a different agreement now with the kind of, we're going to respect that.
I got all that. I just, it was like one sentence that Howard said. What was the second thing you said, Howard? And then he, he went into clarity.
The opportunities for respite 24/7 really are significant and potentially Loews and Fishes at this point. And then with the opening of the Downtown Hub, that absolutely is another opportunity.
That's another option.
And the Science Center would stay weather-based, just like everybody else. All right. I just, I thought I heard that. I'm sorry. Really.
Okay. Are you good? Everyone good? Okay.
Can I just make a quick, can I make a quick request of my colleagues, Mayor?
Yes.
Because I would be remiss if I didn't note that every, all three of those sites that we just mentioned exploring for 24/7 respite are in my district. And I welcome that. I welcome that conversation. I welcome figuring that out. I would love that the next time we bring back an update on this item, including warming center, like a weather-based criteria, the other stuff we talked about, to keep discussing with staff, if each of my colleagues could try to come forward with an idea for 24/7 triage in your districts as well. This isn't going to work if it all only happens in the central city. We all know there's need in all of our districts. There's need city and county-wide. So I hope that I'm willing to have all three of these sites explored in my district, but I hope that each of you will come forward with ideas as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Let's call the role, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shinier?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Thank you very much. That passes 90. Thank you again to the city staff. It's a tremendous amount of work and, and, and not a traditional role of the city. Completely acknowledge and say it for the 10th time tonight, we cannot do this alone. We need, we, we need more and more partners. All right. Members, that's the agenda for this evening. Is there public testimony and items not on the agenda? I know that there is a, a journey in memory, a very poignant journey in memory tonight. But let's, is there public testimony items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three hands raised to, to make comments. But I'd like to read board and commission appointments first to the Capital Area Development Authority Governing Board, Jose Bautita Mifa, Anne Landbertha Henshaw Memorial Funds Commission, Michelle Arnold, and Sheila Ellis, to the Sacramento Ethics Commission, Deanna Adams, Linda Ing, and Nicole Vasquez. And so for public comment, our first caller is last four digits, 4366. I have their phone number. Mr. Davis?
Yes, I would like to end, I would like to make an announcement about Del Paso Heights. Something major happened last Friday. It happened at the Golden One Center. And it was the teenage, and I do mean the teenage young men, won the basketball title at the Golden One. And they should be rewarded for that. I always hear the city manager say that he, District Two is a top priority. I think that the, the mayor, and I feel your frustration tonight, Mr. Laloie, and for somebody who actually said that the cheesecakes were the best in the United States, it would be great to get with a Del Paso Heights native, because your, your frustration would go down. We are really like a case study. We really are. We've gone viral and I wanted to acknowledge the accomplishment by these young fellows because the coach had virus, the, his mother died, his sister died, all kinds of people were ill, and they beat El Grove on Wednesday, and I didn't see it anywhere in the paper. But if it would have been reversed, you would have seen it. And then they had to go and beat Granite Bay, which was a very good team. And what I noticed was that there should be support for these young people. And I don't mean a parade. They can get sick in a parade. Give them something. The Drum Line, which is known all over this country, received kudos from the Sacramento Bee. Shout out to the Sacramento Bee. And they always have trouble traveling. It should be some money in the city manager's office and in the budget to make sure anytime they got to catch a flight out of this city, they're already well-known.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, the cheesecakes went viral and I believe Mr. Harris tasted them during Valentine's.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
Hi, I want to talk about the pro housing since we're the only city in the state that has the pro housing. I think it should include low income, extremely low income, and also accessible housing for the homeless, disabled population. We should be building more of those kind of housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Richard Wake.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District Seven. I was prompted to call back in based upon some comments that Councilmember Laloe said. First of all, I agree with, I totally agree with what Councilwoman Valenzuela said about all three sites being in her district. And you know, I follow this issue quite closely. And as I mentioned before, I don't appreciate all the people in City Council, District Four, that keep bashing her unnecessarily and don't come up with any other solutions. I also agree with what Councilmember Jennings said about, you know, getting more sites open in other districts. But let me just say this. I am for opening sites in every district. But, you know, I do my fair share of helping the homeless, the unhoused people here in Sacramento. I'm not going to go into every little thing that I've done now. We don't have the time for that. And nobody wants to hear that anyways. But I'm just going to say this. I will lead the fight against opening a site at at the community center here in Belle Coulage as long as Councilmember Laloe is sanctioning sweeps in City Council, District Two, forcing women and children out of their motor homes and trailers and cars and putting them into other neighborhoods. He intentionally took, asked the money for for code enforcement so he could push these vehicles out of his district and at the whims of the business people, instead of taking into consideration the whole city, like Mayor Steinberg just acknowledged that the problem is with the whole city. So, you know, I'm for opening up sites in more city council districts, but not when Councilmember Laloe is sanctioning
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, excuse me.
People out of their vehicles in City Council District Two. Making women and children homeless. I will lead the fight against opening up the Belle Coulage.
Wait a second.
If he continues to do that.
Okay.
Mayor.
Who is that?
I would caution all speakers to not call out the council members by name.
Well, okay.
And Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Let's now turn it back to the members of the council for final comments here. Council ideas and questions and adjourned in memory. Councilmember Shanir, Loey, Guera, and then I know the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Harris wanted to adjourn in memory of the children and adult killed last night.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. One announcement to request the announcement. I think I'm speaking for Councilmember Guera here as well. We're really excited. Tomorrow morning is the opening of Rancho San Miguel, which is the market that we worked for quite a while to get to replace the food source on Stockton Boulevard and Broadway. So moving into a food desert, probably 75 to 80% of their employees are local hires. They've been great about that and wonderful to work with. A special shout out to Leslie Fritchy, who helped make this happen. We had some bond money sitting around that we we use to help with some TIs. And I'm just really excited about it. I hear their in-store food is great and looking forward to that as well. We have a ribbon cutting at 8:30 and then the store will be officially open at 9 o'clock. So hope that people can come by at some point. Two, two things I want to do. One is probably about two years ago after the last election or during the last election, I requested that the city take a look at its policy on city employees using their titles on ballot designations or not on ballot designations, but signing in in support or opposition to ballot initiatives. That kind of just went away. It's been on the log as I was talking to Susanna Alcolat today. It's been on the log for two years. And so I want to put it back on the agenda for Law and Ledge. I do think we need to think through if employees, if if the city has taken a position one way or another, should an employee be able to use their title? They can do anything they want as a as a citizen, certainly. So that's, that's one piece. And then the other is each year we adopt our council rules. I know that our city clerk has been working on them for quite a while now. And so, Mayor, I think on this one, it's probably you setting it on the agenda. I know there's lots of stuff to talk about. I know the Vice Mayor has done a lot of work on our commissions. I have questions about our standing committees and some other things. So we'd love to get that scheduled so we could have some discussions about how we want to move forward there as well. So Mayor, I think that one is is more you than the city manager. And then the workshop, we're talking about the policy around elections. We'll put on the log at Law and Ledge.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Shanir. Let's see, you've got, Mayor Protem Guera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, you know, let me also, you know, we're excited about the the store opening, the Rancho San Miguel. I think that's an exciting piece, very much needed in the area with the food desert. There's a lot of excitement about it. Employees still own a store model as well. You know, Mr. Mayor, this is, you know, also in light of the tragic incident last night. I've been working very closely with Supervisor Rich Desmond. First, I want to, and you know, and, you know, give my condolences out to the families of of the children who who were killed. For any of us who, for anyone, but particularly for us with our parents with kids, it's just, this is just an unbelievable situation, just tragic situation. You know, I do want to thank Lieutenant Jeff Shirashi from our police department also, who reached out to our office immediately after the incident or during the incident when we had very little information and was doing extensive community outreach for us while the Sheriff's Department was responding to the issue. So please, I want to do, express my gratitude to our department as well, who was helping out and getting some information out as well. We also want to thank, you know, Faith Whitmore from the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, who has been also helping support Supervisor Rich Desmond here and some of this information. And I know there will be more information to come. And both Supervisor Desmond and and Faith Whitmore from Family Justice Center shared us an app that we share, the prayer vigil that'll be out tomorrow, Wednesday at March, March 2 at 6:30 over at the Higher, Higher Heights Community Church Center. But it did, you know, in, it did remind us, and I sit on the board for the Family Justice Center for full disclosure, about how domestic violence has, has been always prevalent and and many times in many communities. Not spoken enough enough. Over the last two years, the percentage and the numbers that we've seen for calls for service, not just at the Regional Family Justice Center, but at my sister's house. And we was talking to Nilda not too long ago at their event that they had. But the numbers are growing significantly. And I do have a request for the, I know we're going to adjourn in memory here, but specifically I want to, I have a request for the city manager that it's specifically in light of the recent incidents, that we look at our city PIO to leverage our existing contracts. We just approved not too long ago some outreach contracts with our COVID relief resources to do more outreach with our partners. We already, when the pandemic started, saw that this was going to be a challenge. And luckily, we were able to approve some of the CARES dollars to go immediately to our our partners that are helping out address the issue of domestic violence in this violent act. But it just reminds us sadly that what we've been doing is not enough. And that if there's any resources that we can use right now to make sure that we elevate this and not fall, let it fall behind so that the, you know, the mother and the family who are going through this right now, we can avoid this ever again. So I do want to ask that to our city manager, if you could work with our city PIO, to look at our existing resources. And also, you know, also, again, our, another good partnership with with our county here as well. And I know Supervisor Desmond's been working on this quite a bit here. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll join in the the adjourned in memory that our, my colleagues will be joining me as well. But I do ask that for the city manager, if we could look at that PIO contract.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, I was honored to attend an event. In fact, Mr. Mayor, you were there as well, the the gathering of the Ukrainian community and what's taking place overseas. I just want to make sure that, you know, all of the Ukrainian residents in Sacramento know that they are in our thoughts. And I wish them nothing but the best. And I hope that their family, friends overseas are are safe and protected. And I hope that our administration can do a lot more than what we have been doing so far to minimize a crazy dictator such as Putin. Today, we are buying approximately 500,000 barrels of oil on a daily basis from Putin, actually. So I hope that the the current administration can minimize that or bring that down to zero for the sake of a free and safe Ukraine. Also, I wanted to also make a comment. A few weeks ago, there was some narrative that was pushed out there with my name attached to it. I want to be very clear. I am extremely proud and grateful to all of our city staff and offices, whether it's DCR, Fire Department, Police Department, Code Enforcement, or City Attorney. Without you guys, we would not have a city. And unfortunately, in this time and this climate, whether you do your job, you get beat up. You don't do your job, you get beat up. But I just want to go on the record and say how grateful I am to be part of a city that has such wonderful offices, whether it's the Police Department, Code Enforcement, DCR, and others. So again, I I appreciate that everything you guys do to make our city better and safe and continue doing the phenomenal job that you're doing. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Today at 1 o'clock, I had the honor of attending family and friends and current and past elected officials who honored Mayor, former Mayor Ann Rudin today at the Mayor Ann Rudin Peace Pond, which is inland park. And we did so by planting three Japanese flowering cherry trees in tribute to all the wonderful things that she did as an elective official, as a council member, and as a mayor. And I just would encourage my colleagues and all the citizens and residents of Sacramento to go by the Mayor Ann Rudin Peace Pond, which is right off of 14th Avenue in Land Park. It was a beautiful occasion and I was glad to see her family and friends out there honoring her for what she's done here in Sacramento.
Thank you for representing us out there, Councilmember Jennings. I wish I could have made it. I'm sorry I didn't. But Mayor Rudin was a great sacrament and appreciate you representing us. Vice Mayor Ashby and Councilmember Harris, adjourned in memory. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Do you like to start, Jack? Councilmember Harris, you want to start?
Okay, sure. Thank you, Angelique. Well, as we all know, an unspeakable tragedy happened last night in Arden Arcade. We know that three young girls had their lives extinguished by their father as well as the person supervising their meeting. A case of domestic violence. It's certainly something that strikes at the heart of every parent and actually every person, you know, who who hears of such an act. As as Eric pointed out, domestic violence is very volatile. Domestic violence is what led to the demise of Taro Sullivan. Domestic violence is really tough for our first responders to respond to. To see a scene like that takes its toll on our police department, our fire department. In this case, the three young girls in question all went to school in South Natomas. And, you know, the toll that it takes on their classmates is what I'm thinking about. Bannon Creek Elementary and Leroy Green are going to go through some significant grief. It's a really tough situation. And, you know, I know our hearts are all, are all with them. And certainly their mother who survives this tragedy. But everybody who knows them, everybody who knows those little girls who went to school with them, who cared for them. This is a very far-reaching scenario. It's a tough one to take on. It's a tough one to take in. You know, I just want to say to the the people at Bannon Creek Elementary and Leroy Green Academy that we really feel for you. We we get the loss. And I'm sure that Angelique feels the same, that anything we can do for those two schools, we will do it. So please reach out if you need help in any way. Angelique.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Harris, that was a really good start. I'm sorry that I missed the beginning of the meeting today. As I told you when I did jump on, I fully expected to be on the council meeting by the time it started. But in addition to losing these three beautiful little girls in Natomas, we also had a missing at-risk youth. And we did, we did find him tonight. And that's why I was late to the meeting. So I want to make sure I thank the city agencies that helped us and our partners out in the community. Crystal Sanchez really helped here. She was a big help. And and those in the Homeless Union were really activated their network to help us find Jackson. And the, our Office of Emergency Management and the Sacramento Police Department. And we had lots and lots of volunteers and our city PIO and Howard's team, everyone, thank you so much. It made a really big difference in the life of a little boy who struggles an awful lot with some, some big challenges and has a great family. In addition to that, though, I did get the call in the middle of the night that that these precious little girls who lost their lives yesterday were from Natomas. At first, we weren't sure which school, but we figured it out in the middle of the night sometime last night. And, you know, I I wish, because today is March 1st, that Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela and I were just closing out this meeting and telling you happy Women's History Month and talking about all the accomplishments of women and how proud we are. But I can't help but think about how far we still have to go and how this mom, who is an English second language speaker, managed to leave a violent marriage. She found her way out. She got a divorce. She got a restraining order. She got a court to give her supervised visits only for her three precious daughters. She did everything that any one of us would have suggested to her to do. She was trying to escape violence. And in the end, she is completely alone now. All of her children were killed in one moment. All three little girls, nine-year-old Samara, 10-year-old Samantha, and 13-year-old Samaya, all gone. So I want to say thank you to Natomas Unified School District for acting out in the middle of the night to get ready for the students who would face the trauma today. In addition to the students at Bannon Creek and Leroy Green, the students had some family members that also went to other schools in the district. And the Sacramento Sheriff's Department and our City of Sacramento chaplains all sent folks to those schools to be very helpful. I also want to thank the Sacramento Police Department and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department and the Sacramento Fire Department. I was told today by several longtime homicide detectives that it was the worst and most difficult scene that they had ever been a part of or ever witnessed. And I'm sure that's true because our first responders like to be able to get there and do something about something. And instead, it was too late. And I know that's going to be hard for everybody to live with because no one can unsee what they saw. But none will suffer more than the mom of these three beautiful girls. But none will suffer more than the mom of these three beautiful girls. And I'm so sad for her. I want you all to know that, um, the Sheriff's Department did put my office in contact with the mom. Some members of the Sacramento Kings are, are going to help with the funeral expenses and I am going to do everything I can to help coordinate resources for her in the days to come. Obviously, Karina and my team will be helping you very much because this mom speaks Spanish. So we will do what we can. And if any of you want to participate in that, please let me know. And I guess, you know, Mayor, what I want to do is, of course, there were, there were other, um, folks who died last night, but I really would like to close out this meeting in honor of those just three little lives taken way too soon from our city, from our community, from their sweet mom, from this world. So I guess in honor, Mayor, of Samantha, Samara, and Samaya, I would adjourn the City of Sacramento meeting on March first, the first day of Women's History Month in twenty twenty-two.
Beautiful, beautifully said. Um, in their memory and, uh, no more victims or victims. Members, thank you for a long, uh, productive evening. Um, in their memory and also in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers as well. All right, everyone? Good night, we're adjourned.